Planning zoning commission. Regular meeting, March 22nd, 2022. I have some phone numbers and a webinar ID to call off. To call in, it's 1-3462-248-7799. And the webinar ID is 83707722740. And. Carlos, when he comes back. Please call the roll.
Good evening, commissioners. Commissioner Sipperly.
Here.
Commissioner Waller.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Whisseth.
Having on a W, but yes.
Commissioner Wymer. Chairship.
Here.
I know my name starts with C, but here.
Okay, we have a quorum, receipt of minutes. Entertainer motion regarding the minutes of February 22nd, 2022.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes from February 22nd, 2022.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to receive those minutes. We have any discussions regarding that? So you know, I'll call for a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? So we've accepted those. Comments of citizens who carried before, for items not on the agenda, anybody here or online wish to address the commission. They now close the public comment. And go to the first continuing, the only continued item. Planning file 0202, Part 2, Fire Impact Fees. And Jim is here.
Hold on just a second. Share my screen here. Good evening, commissioners. I'm here this evening for planning item 0222, which is related to the fire impact fees. In researching a question about fire impact fees for a member of the Rural Fire Protection Board, we realized that the formula for the fire fees was inadvertently left out of the code when we did the redraft. So the section that, you know, it just, it says something like, the fee shall be calculated as follows, colon, and then it doesn't say anything. We think that that's a Scrivener's error, but it's long enough ago because the adoption was in 2018 that we felt like it should come back through the process. So code amendments require a public hearing at Planning Commission and then also a public hearing at City Council, and it's an ordinance for the code change, so it's a first reading and a second reading. So we are using the language that was adopted in 2016 for the formulas. I did go back and spend a lot of time with the tapes and listen, looked at resolutions, looked for anything else that had happened, you know, ordinances that had happened in between, we couldn't find any. So what, let me make this, let me make this small so you can see this. So what we did was, as I said, we went back to what was in the code that was in the ordinance that was adopted in 2016. And it has this EQR formula, and it's similar to other locations within the municipal code, which establish a measurement for an equivalent to single-family residential unit for different types of uses. And it's the system improvement fee that's paid for the use of the system, the improvement to the system. So we have wastewater improvement fees, we have water improvement fees, and we have these fire impact fees. And all of that work was done with different studies, but at the same time, like 2016 is when that information came to City Council. And I have this one that's highlighted for accessory dwelling units. Because in what was adopted, it says .65 of an EQR for ADUs, guest home, separate apartments, attached to single-family and other separate residential units up to two bedrooms or one bathroom with one bathroom and a kitchen. And that isn't how we have been processing these. And I cannot find the rationale as to why. Did, as I mentioned, spend some time with the YouTube and looking. And I cannot find a rationale for it. I have a supposition. I won't share it with you, but these are, these are the formulas, and I gave you both the resolution and the ordinance from 2016. So you could see compared to what we're proposing, and it's the same as what was, what we believe was adopted on first and second reading in 2016. A code amendment is a legislative act by the City Council, and so prior to that going to City Council, we, the code requires a recommendation from the Planning Commission. And both Planning Commission and City Council consider whether and to what extent the proposed amendment is consistent with a comprehensive plan and other city policies, does not conflict with other provisions of this code or other provisions in the Glenwood Springs Municipal Code, whether and to what extent it's necessary to address a demonstrated community need. It's necessary to respond to substantial changes in conditions or policy, and is consistent with the general purpose and the intent of this code. And as I mentioned before, we're just intending to put back the formula that we have been relying on with this exception of the .65. So we have been, we got a spreadsheet, and this is, this predates my time, and I think it predates most of community development staff. We have a spreadsheet that does all the calculations for us, and it, on it, it says .25 EQR's for those ADUs and those other smaller residential units. So the difference of that is this 34375 versus the 825 for what we believe was adopted and coded at the time. And again, as I mentioned, the code amendment is, you should consider whether and to what extent the proposed amendment meets these criteria. And with that, I'm open to any questions that you may have, and I'm not sure if the fire chief or anyone from the fire department is on. They were intending to be here last time, but it looks like they are not here. Today. And I will answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Jim. Just commission their questions. Oh, there you are, Joy, please.
So we have been assessing those fees, just the language has not been in the code.
So it's the two things. We, we believed it was in the code, and we have been using the same formula. And if we go, if I actually go back to that PowerPoint.
And then my other question is, so do we intend to bring it up to the .65?
So that is, that is a point of clarification. I think that we have been charging the fees. So there's, and I started to say this, there are two things, one, which is the ordinance that puts the language in the code, but there's also a resolution that set that there's a, an increase of this fee and then the wastewater and water fee, so both are in your packet, and it's very confusing because they're both called like the exact same number. The resolution and the ordinance just happened to be the same, you know, 1621, I think, in 2116. So we have been charging the .25 for ADUs, and we have been charging this formula for all of the other uses whenever something comes through. I believe that City Council at the time adopted this .65. Again, I'm not certain as to what happened. I have an idea, but, so we have been charging the .25 all of this while.
But nothing would, would be retroactive, like people would not owe dues, it would just be adopted and then moving forward.
Moving forward, okay. Charge the .65.
Okay.
And I do anticipate that there may be some conversation about this at City Council, whether they, I think the fire department would like to have the fees, you know, they, they use those fees for the improvements that they need to, to, you know, for their capital needs, but I think there may be a conversation about whether or not.
To increase it, because it's a pretty hefty increase for, for the smaller units.
I just wanted to, to let you know that, that that has happened, and we are, I don't have an explanation as to. And I'm sure that there was something that happened, I just, all this time later, I can't determine what.
When they did an overhaul of the ADU policy in town, they didn't reduce that at all? Because that, of course, we're trying to incentivize more infill.
I didn't find it, that doesn't mean that didn't happen, but I did not, I didn't find it in my looking. And I will just ask, Hannah, Hannah, who is kind of our ADU expert, we just learned to where. And it was .25 when Hannah got the spreadsheet, so that was in 2016. So it would have had to have happened at that, that time. And again, it's possible that I didn't find it in my research, but I am not certain.
So it was 0.5 in 2016? Is that what you just said?
So the formula was vastly different before they did this. So in order to set these system improvement fees, there's an analysis of how much capital improvements or whatever that is being assessed against. So there was a, a study that was done at that time, and the way that they, the way that they assessed the fees prior to 2016 for fire was different. And so it, this is, we're trying to put back into the code what they did in 2016 that went with that rational nexus study. And you can charge less. But if your analysis has this rational nexus, you wouldn't be able to charge more.
So you said you have a good reason for believing that they meant to do 0.65? Could you share that with us?
Oh, my, my idea of what happened.
Idea, yeah.
A met supposition. I, um, I think it was related to the fact that there was another set of fees that was happening at the same time. But when I look at what was approved, this was what was approved.
Okay, thank you.
So I send your staff report too. So does it need to go to the City Council and still need two hearings? I mean, so, so we're just, we're just the first group to say yea or nay, and then it goes forward, okay?
Right.
Thanks. Carolyn, please.
I have just a quick clarification on your slide number four, that's the brown one. You had shown us the fee for .6, but we're really discussing.
I think it rounded when, I think this is a PowerPoint.
Okay, so the .65 is a good number, and it would be just over $800 for an ADU.
Yeah. And I took these numbers from, but that doesn't make sense because it, it left the .25. Yeah, but this number, and I, I took it from an email from, from staff. So I, this is the, the difference in those two numbers. And I don't know, Hannah, if you wanted to just verify.
Doing so right now.
Okay, because I'm like, I just, when I saw it just now, when I pulled it up, I was like, oh, that must be a PowerPoint thing, but it doesn't make sense because it's .25. It left that. And there is a complicated, so let me just also say really quickly that there's a very complicated spreadsheet that is, has all of these, like if then, square footage, you have to put it in the right place. So it's, it's not an easy tool to use.
So easy. Just to come down.
So.
.65, .65.
So I kind of alluded to this in my last question, but do you think we make a case to leave it at the .25 to encourage infill and encourage ADUs to be?
And I think you, or you certainly can, and that is what we have been charging since 2016. But we didn't go back and do a rational nexus study. And what we were trying to do is just put back into, into code what we believed was missing. Oh, so it is, it is slightly different, so great catch, Carolyn. Commissioner Sipperly, it's 89375. Can I change it in the slide?
And this is just a fire portion of all the fees that would be assessed at the time of apartment issuance, right?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The, the 895 or whatever is just the fire component of the fees. It's not the water or the parks or anything, this is just fire.
This is just fire. Okay, so, and there's a whole, you know, every project is, has its, if you've ever worked with a planning and building department, you know that every project has its own circumstances. So some of the fees are paid for residential, but they aren't paid for commercial, for example. Some places have dedicated park lines, so then they're not paying the park fee or that there was some water that was allocated, and so they have a different formula. So every one of these is different, but yes, in general, that a project comes through and they're paying. Or, or the other example is that they're not on our system. So we have the West Glenwood Sand System, so obviously they're not paying the fees to us, they would be paying the fees to West Glenwood Sanitation. So yes, this is just one portion of the very many fees that we calculate as something goes through the process.
With, with the spreadsheet, as you described, probably the other fees for ADUs are going to be assessed at .65%.
I'm sorry.
With, not, not counting fire, are the other fees for ADUs, that's .65% as well, just more or less?
So we, I think, I don't know if I can get to the system improvement fee spreadsheet from here. But we have, all of the formulas are different, so some of them are based on like a square footage number. So like the public art fee that you just put in place is a, is a cost per square gross square foot. So all of the various processes are separate. But we do them all together at the end of, we often give an estimate to, to a, an applicant at the beginning of the process, but they really aren't paid until they're getting their building permit. And we pay, we ask for them to pay half upfront and half of the time of CDO. And I can probably pull up the code really quickly, if you'll appear with me.
I do like Joy's idea of incentivizing infill development with ADUs. Maybe when we get to the actual need of the ADU stuff, we can talk about fee waivers then as a, an exemption to the standard table. If, if, say if someone built an ADU and they wanted to put, they wanted to make it affordable, you know, 100% of AMI, maybe then we could negotiate the fees.
So there are some where. So I'm gonna just look at this really quickly, can you see that? It knows a little bit faint, but, so this section is for the system improvement fees that are for water and wastewater. So this part is in the utility section. So when you look at residential units, so secondary residential units are at the .25. And the multifamily residential units are based on this .25 per bedroom or the .06 EQR per 100 square feet, not to exceed 1 EQR. So as you can see, there's lots of variables that happen in these formulas. And so this is kind of what I think was the, potentially what happened is that ADUs, these secondary, secondary residential units are at this .25, and they weren't, it was not changed in what I see that was adopted. And then I was going to look really quickly at the other fees. Carolyn, tell me again what the question was that you had that was.
What is, is .65 or is .25 applied to ADUs across the board or is here and there? Now we're seeing it's, you know, .25 here, yet five would be .65.
Right.
And yes, I did want to circle back to the incentivizing infill with ADUs.
Oh, that's the other thing I wanted to show you. Thank you for that reminder. So in Title 70. So there are places where it specifies whether or not there can be a waiver in these codes. So for example, in the fire fees, which is the variant. It's in here, I just.
I see it there on number five at the top.
That there is an application that can be made to the city when capital improvements have been installed. So there was a conversation recently about the building code adoption, going to the 2021 building codes where single-family residential and detached accessory dwelling units will have to fire sprinkler their new construction. So there has been a conversation about whether or not the, and it was something that we had a quick conversation with City Council about. Could that ADU that is now having to be fire sprinkled or come to City Council and ask for the ability to have their fire suppression or their fire impact fees waived under this section that's already existing in the code? But it's, I think it says the city, so in that case, we would take that to City Council. So it's not, it would not be a consideration at the Mission. And unless there were a, some variance, it's very unlikely that you would see an accessory dwelling unit in any project.
Is, is there a reason that there would be a variation between the system improvement fees for water and sewer and fire? I mean, it seems like the EQR's, does it make sense that they are exactly the same across the board? Or is there a reason that they should be different?
So they, each of those processes was its own analysis for what those capital improvement fees were for fire and what those capital, or the capital improvements that were needed for water and wastewater. And so those projects were separate. And it's because they, the impact fee has to be tied to those, this rational nexus of what are those fees being paid for to cover. And without having had a conversation with the folks who did the analysis, I, I don't know that I could say. But, but you know, it's based on a. Exactly, but you know, it's based on a, it's based on a a percentage of what is that residential equivalent, so it, it could be that that is exactly the reason that point two five happened in the fire fee is that there was a conversation that they should all be the same, but again, it just, from, from what I found in what was approved, I saw it as the point six five that was um, that was approved at the time, but I do think that it was because there was maybe this idea that they wanted to be the same EQR, that same point two five.
Have there been concerns raised by the fire departments in terms of lack of funding, or, I mean, I know we know that it's a constant concern. But is there anything immediate that's been brought to our attention, or is it mainly to clarify the code?
So then we would need to have to, a- and maybe Richard could speak to this, but you know, generally what we would do is, we would do a new, a new rational nexus study that would take into account all of the capital needs that would be.
Right.
Part of this assessment.
So today, we're just, are, are we making a recommendation on whether we should keep it the same, keep it at what we've been charging? Or are, are we just adopting the code language?
So you're making a recommendation to city council to put back a formula into the code, my recommendation is to put it, to put this formula back into the code, I think one point of clarification is whether you think that it should be point two five or point six five.
Okay.
Um, but um, the reason we're here is because there's this piece that's lacking in the code.
And, and staff is recommending that we bring it back to the point six five, what is staff recommending?
I, what I did was I, because we didn't go back to do a, a rational nexus, we, I just was trying to bring forward what was, what I thought was adopted at the time, but again, without that clarification of if it was intended to be the point two five, um, I think that that is something that this body can recommend, and certainly city council will have a conversation about.
As I understand ADU fees, they, they end up coming in around six to eight thousand dollars usually, is that, is that right?
I think it's.
When you pay tax fees and?
Yeah, I think it is around there, I, I had a five thousand dollars and change number, but it could be six thousand, I don't think it's seven.
Okay, so, so then this would increase it about seven hundred dollars from that.
If, I mean, if it is to stay at that point six five.
Right. Okay.
They, I would say that they are generally much smaller units, um, and so, um, but it's certainly at your discretion.
How often are the fees looked at?
Well, um, I don't have the, that off the top of my head, I do know that we have some um, areas on the water and wastewater where we feel like we need to have a revision um, made, so we will look at those very specific ones hopefully this year. But how often a rational nexus study is done, um, I don't know that I can say off the top of my head.
So is, is, is based on maybe environmental things that are going on in the community, that sort of thing, you know?
Probably like those capital needs and the idea that like this.
So that could be the other side too, I mean, if you're trying to incentivize or the fire department needs more, I mean, it's those kind of things, it's what.
Right.
Creates, and I mean, and then the reason I'm kind of asking, it's been six years, so is it, you know, is it time to look at it again, or do we just go with?
And there is this climber that is um, built in to the code. So it has been increased for water and wastewater over time, and we have just increased it for fire, bringing it up to that.
Yeah, I think, I read that it was. It was based on the um, whatever, the, the inflation rate, federal inflation rate, has that been applied every year consistently?
It has been on the water and wastewater side, it has not been on the, the fire side. Um, it was, there was a delay in its implementation, and we, for whatever reason, didn't get that included. So it hasn't been, it has not been, but this thirteen seventy-five per EQR takes into account all of the increases that it should have had over time. So we, that was actually the question that we had from the, the rural, rural fire board, so it, basically what happened was, I had this question, I did a little research, I was like, where, where's the formula, we need the formula back. So that leads me tonight, to tonight.
So this, this exhibit A, is that?
That is derived from what I believe was approved in twenty sixteen.
So that was a part of the twenty sixteen ordinance.
Right, so you have, in your packet, you have both of the ones that I believe were the ones that were approved from twenty sixteen, or at least were in the clerk's files for those, for both the uh, resolution that set the number, the dollar figure and the formula which was in the code, which was the ordinance. And I just took that language, I mean, it looks almost exactly the same cuz I just grabbed the language and put it in this kind of draft ordinance. And I apologize for, for having to be here, and um, you know, we, we, we certainly uh, are human, and we, we do our best.
Okay, any other questions for Jim? Seeing none. Guess I will. Call for the question regarding planning file twenty oh two oh two, part two, fire impact fees. Which is a, as planning and zoning commission, we are recommending body to council, and staff is recommending approval with findings on page two. And I'll open it for a motion.
Joy. I'll make a motion to approve planning item zero two two two. With the proposed text amendments with the following suggestions and findings, do I need to go through all of these? No, okay, um, I would make a recommendation that they stay at the point two five, um, just to encourage infill. And it seems that we've, we've done that um, citywide, and so I think we keep the, if, if we can propose that to city council.
I'll second that.
Good, motion and a second, uh, any further discussion?
So I guess my question is on, so, so point six five is what it, yeah, I mean, that's what you're saying, I mean, would we do our recommendation that way, or would we do um, a point six five, you know, I mean, I, I, I guess I was thinking, I was doing the point six five and saying, we think it should be point two five, or how often should you relook at it? Again, to understand are there capital improvements, or are, are there some, I'll use the word environmental causes, whether they're ADU from a, from a user perspective, or from, or from the, the fire department stuff, I, I, I mean, I'm just kind of throwing that out as a.
So I think e- either way, um, I think what we will do either way is represent that there were lots of questions about the point two five, and so I think if the motion is for it to stay at the point two five, which is what we have been charging all this, all this while, certainly we would bring that recommendation to city council, even if that weren't your recommendation, I think we would make sure that council knows that there was a conversation about it staying at the point two five. Um, and certainly we can also pass on the idea that there may need to be an additional review or a new review of the rational nexus for um, system improvement base.
Emma, please.
I guess Jen just sort of addressed my concern, I don't know that I'm on team, keep it at point two five considering what inflation has been like the past six years, like, I don't think that we go, I don't know that I, I guess that would be my question, uh, I guess what you said, if we're, if we're looking at numbers and reassessing, I'd feel more comfortable with that versus like, we think that we stay at this hard number.
Except they've already adjusted the EQR for the inflation, right, the, the dollar amount, which.
We did.
All the, all the, us, all the fees, right, it, it, it was a broadband adjustment for inflation.
Right, so there is a, a climber that, that is tied to the um, consumer price index that that was a delay, I think, on both sides, but maybe just on the fireside, I'd have to, to pull it up again, and for whatever reason, we just didn't, we have been doing it for water and wastewater this entire time, and it did not happen on the fireside, so. But it, it also is not a huge number as compared to the water and wastewater um, EQR, like a full EQR, which is, which is more than it is on the fire side.
So, just so I understand, um, the fire side, there was a delay, so potentially the zero six five is an appropriate adjustment, is that what I'm understanding? Just because like, I, I, I do kind of agree with inflation and how things are going, and you know, the cost actually, fight a fire seems like it would be a lot higher as opposed to like sewer to your house.
And I guess I would say if that, that is the concern, what I think would be fairest is for us to look at all of the fees rather than to impact a single one. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
You know, oh, Joy, go ahead, please.
What, I was just gonna say, do we need to um, adjust the recommendation then, and just say that city council decides whether it it be adjusted?
Well, I, I mean, I think, I, I think your, the reason that there's a recommendation for a planning commission is because you have insight, so um, I would say that you should take all of that to, into account. I, I guess I was just saying, if, if the, the rationale is the, the thought that it, that there has been all this inflation that's not being accounted for, it seems like that um, we should carry forward the message that there's a c- concern that all of the fees should be addressed.
So the, the next item down, um, well, on the second page here, it talks about a studio apartment or buffet, which I don't even know what a buffet is, or, or condo, or condo with one kitchen no greater than fifteen hundred square feet. I, I have a hard time differentiating between that and an ADU in terms of the impact to the system, and this, the studio apartment could be um, if that were an addition onto an existing building, existing home, is that?
And what do you know?
Is that what a buffet is?
I think there's no store, but a buffet, right?
Yeah, I.
Is that?
I think, I think.
No, we don't use that word.
Yeah, I.
You guys are fancy.
But I will say that there are, you know, there are various um, you know, each additional bedroom in single-family ha- like, has a different, over the certain, like, assumed amount. So all of the various fees on the other for water and wastewater are. You know, they're for each of those individual uses, as I said, it's a very complicated spreadsheet, so the multifamily residential units on the accessory dwelling unit, oh no, sorry, secondary residential units for accessory dwelling units, um, a separate complete dwelling unit containing a sep- separate facilities for sleeping, cooking, and sanitation that's contained within or attached to detached single-family dwelling or detached from it on the same property is point two five on the water wastewater side. And then the multifamily residential units for duplexes, apartments, townhomes, and similar facilities in the same complex, and small cabins, and courts, not associated with motels, with fewer than four bedrooms, two bathrooms, one kitchen, no greater than thirty-five hundred square feet of irrigated lawn and garden watered by sprinkler, has that greater of point two five EQR per bedroom, or the point oh six EQR per hundreds uh, square feet.
So if you're in some district that allows you to create a, a mother law apartment within your existing building, um, which has all self-contained facilities, the kitchen, bathroom, sleeping. What does the, how does that fall under all of this? Does that fall under the studio apartment?
But what I would say is that studio apartment or the buffet or condo with one kitchen no greater than fifteen hundred square feet on this spreadsheet that we have for the fire fees is point six five.
I was coming up here just as a, the spreadsheet is very complicated, we also don't use the wor- the word buffet.
Yes.
And then, yeah, an accessory dwelling unit on the total fees now comes to five thousand seven hundred and change. Um, and then also to Commissioner Sipperly's question earlier, um, all accessory dwelling units can enter into the voluntary deed restriction program as well to have all of the system improvement fees waived, so this is also a component of that. And here for any other spreadsheet questions?
Please.
I guess I'm, I'm struggling with any number, and I, I guess we're, the reason I'm struggling with it is that um, it's been six years, and you know, I mean, I, I, so I can see the point six five, but, but, and I, you know, I understand it, you know, we're trying to incentivize ADUs, which is different than maybe, and, and we were six years ago, but it's a di- it's even more incentivizing it seems now, and I don't know what capital improvements they need, and I also get that the cost of fight fires is on, so you know, I mean, it, it, it almost seems to me like we say, these are all the things that are really issues that, that needs to be figured out, I, it, it, it seems like it's above my pay grade to say that it should be point six five or point two five, I mean, cuz if we say point six five, it's just going back to that point in time, which is six years ago. A lot has changed in that time, it's a different, I, I mean, that's, that's where I'm kind of struggling with it a little bit. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but.
Perfect sense.
To amend, can, can the, can we amend the original motion saying that we could potentially, I mean, if, I feel like it's the formula, right, like, the formula is what needs to be reassessed, is that?
So, that one doesn't have a green light, it's always on, this one's always live, but, and I think that's the case for ours, I don't think they have lights, it's, ours are pushed to talk. So I would say that we, we will have this conversation with city council, we will share all this, um, maybe that, like, but we will make sure, we try to make sure, here are the terms that were raised by the planning commission, we put that in the staff report, and um, that. I think what, wha- what I tried to do was just say, this is what I think was approved, I'm just trying to bring it forward. But we have still, I mean, even since we found this um, pretzel, we have been charging the point two five in the meanwhile, because we are not, without a formula, we're just working with the spreadsheet that we have, and again, it was before my time, before Hannah's time, we, I did, what I, you know, did some investigation and the record wasn't certain. And I think, you know, without doing a new ra- rational nexus study, I just wanted to bring forward what I think was approved. But I will, I'm highlighting it for you that we think it could have been point two five, and I'm just not seeing what, what happened where the, there was another motion. And that we, we recognize that city council had a lot of conversations about the system improvement fee, both on, on both sides at the time. And um, so I think I, I appreciate that I'm putting, putting you in a tough position, um, but we're looking for a recommendation to put a formula back into the code.
And we will highlight that there is this um, point six five, point two five kind of um, question at hand, and I think based on those conversations that we just recently had related to the fire suppression system and the increased cost to ADUs, that that they will have this, they will also um, have lots of conversations, I mean, anticipating they will have lots of conversation around this item.
have lots of conversations, I mean, anticipating they will have lots of conversation around this item.
Okay, that's a good, I will, first of all, good catch. So that there's no formula. I mean, I feel comfortable with that explanation, uh, just because I think that's, you know, that's probably the best way to proceed, especially because, you know, there is that misnomer between, okay, if we say zero point six five, I do feel like it's slightly arbitrary and I'd be more comfortable sticking with Joy's original motion. Were you the one who originally spoke? I got lost there.
I, I feel like maybe we just proposed that they keep it at the point two five and then they determine whether they're going to reevaluate the nexus and, and come up with a new a new formula.
That's what I was gonna say, point two five until the rational nexus thing can be redone at least for a fire and you might do them all, but and you know, probably that'll happen after the conflict, right?
And that sounds like a good idea.
So do we need to amend the motion to grow in the rational nexus will come later thing?
I think you're okay. I think we, we heard you and we'll bring that forward.
Should we call the question? Looks like it's flashing yet it's already. So we have motion of second with an addendum. That's yes, yeah.
Or planning item zero two zero two two.
So in summation, Jed, that was yes from the council.
We need just a moment.
When is this?
I was thinking how it changed when I hit share screen and I didn't want to move forward too quickly.
What time is it?
About nine.
How'd you jump? It's parking over there. At the airport? I don't know. I think they got that lot of, yeah, they have one of them closed.
Yeah.
They didn't get people to drive to us.
Yeah, nobody wanted to be out show with all the other people. They really thought we were, I think I, I said, I just wish that the terminal go back, like where the, go back to the terminal.
But you know, do you know what it did? I didn't have to like try to remember if I was at Mountain Albert or Pike's Peak afterwards, I wouldn't go.
Which one is open now?
I think they both are now. I can't, last time I went, I feel like you didn't have the same concern.
Are we good? Okay, uh, under new items, uh, planning file fifty three twenty, city of Glenwood Springs Parks and Recreation Department World Headquarters. Location and extent review. And Trent is here to present us.
Yes, and, and good evening commissioners. I'm, I'm very excited to present to you a location extent review for our parks and recreation department's world headquarters at one ninety one Suckerfield Road. Dan Roper, our parks superintendent is also here and be happy to speak to you and answer any questions that you have. I got a short presentation for you to go through some of the specifics of the application. And just to give you kind of a reminder of, of what a location extent review is. It's a process. It's also known as a public ways review, but it's for public or quasi-public in title thirty two special districts, basically governments that are funded by taxpayer dollars. And the, the, the purpose or your, your main objective is to determine if that public use structure utility com- conforms with a, an adopted master plan. In this instance, being our two thousand and eleven Glenwood Springs Comprehensive Plan. The commission's decision is not binding and that technically, you know, you can make recommendations, but if, if, if an applicant, you know, in this instance, it is the city in our parks department. If an applicant objects to your recommendation, they can always take that back to their board to be, for that decision to be overturned. This does not allow the applicant to be exempt from grading or any building permits that are, are, are required for an application now. In the instance of school districts, those building permits are actually issued by, by the state. But in, in this instance, for this application, our building department would still review it prior to construction. Again, location is one ninety one Suckerfield Road adjacent to the, the city's municipal limits. And some of the uses that are occurring in this area include single family homes to the west, single family home and warehouse to the north. Of course, Glenwood Springs Middle School is to the east and, and other multifamily uses, the much of Beth apartments are located to the south. The property is on them. This proposal involves an eighteen hundred square foot addition to an approximately forty five hundred square foot building. It includes site grading and drainage improvements, changes to the parking and the circulation on site as well as landscaping improvements to help buffer and beautify the site. As you see there in the bottom of, of the, of the slide, you'll see the existing northwest view. Just take a look at the site plan. You know, I have in staff report in our, in our review identified some substandard areas of the application in terms of the city zoning code. That includes the front setback, which in this instance is usually a maximum setback in the mixed use zone as opposed to a minimum. The lack of sidewalks and some of the design elements not being exactly in line with the minimum requirements in terms of of roof, breaking up roofs, the number of elements on various size, sizes and or the color. But I don't want to, you know, lose sight of the fact that this was an existing building, you know, of course, when we, when we evacuated the, the MOC, the Parks and Recs Department was in need, desperate need of a location, a place to go. As you know, electric and, and some of our streets folks moved over on, off of Devera Road, they purchased this building on, on, on Suckerfield Road. One that I'd always looked at as a, as a location would be good for a business. They stole it out from me. But they are improving the, the, the minimum setback on this site with that addition, bringing it closer to Suckerfield Road. The new design does include a very more so pronounced entry along that south elevation. They have added color and texture elevate, are, are, are variations to that, that front facade as well as to the south side. Drastically improves water quality because we already at the site have a dry well that's installed and that it's been graded to the southwest and that, that captures water. The, the historic versus the, the post-construction rate and treats that before it's released from the site. Our parking is much improved and better defined. We will have asphalt paving at the site eventually. Landscaping, they have the intent to add some or preserve some, some landscaping, but also add some islands between some of the parking areas as well as to have kind of a, a showcase garden out front that would, would include native plants, you know, as kind of an example to the community of what you could, you know, kind of in line with our drought resistant landscaping standards that we, that we just adopted. What was it last month? Section seventy sixty fifty D three E three does outline the city's specific approval criteria for location extent review. One, again, being consistency with the comprehensive plan. As you see in the map there on the right-hand side of the slide, this identified as purple, which represents the mixed use zone, which again, it's also that is, are the mixed use designation that also is represented by the zone district. But it supports various goals through infill development and a location for services to support some of these things such as sustainable economic development, maintaining our city as, as the regional kind of center of our county. Addressing transportation needs, directing development to locations affected to serve, supporting social diversity and preserving our natural resources. Two, consistency with the general purpose and intent of the code. It does appear to be content with this, they are in, are consistent with the intent of, of health, safety and welfare and orderly, efficient development, regulating the use of land based on impacts and minimum standards for design. And three, minimizes adverse impacts. There are no non-existing hazards at this site. They've been at this site, the Parks Department for over two years now, prior to COVID. They've viewed, this building has been used for commercial industrial warehousing uses prior to that for many years. And it does, this use doesn't create any additional negative impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. We received some typical comments from our engineering department as well as from public works. We have not received any public comments on this application. And section seventy sixty thirty G one D allows the planning and zoning commission to approve, approve with conditions. Deny the application of, of course, you're allowed to continue it if you needed additional information. Staff does recommend approval of action item one with the findings and conditions on page seven of your staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Of course, Dan Roper's here as well.
Thanks, Trent. Questions for Trent?
Pete? So what, so one on, on your conditions on page seven. Number two. I love that one where it says to the best of their financial ability. Does that, I mean, is that?
Well, you know, I, it, it's one of those things to where it's like, you know, I, I think Mr. Roper and the Parks Department, they already have, and he wants to share with you some of the things, the recommendations that we provided to help maybe get closer to the code requirements for design, especially along that front facade that you'll see from, from Suckerfield Road. That includes adding some windows facade as well as changing the color, things that, that we think that they can do. But it's one of those more, I think, I think it's to your benefit to work with the applicant to make recommendations on things they can do as opposed to saying, you know, we hate it, deny it.
Is, is, is there like a priority or hierarchy that you guys have that staff said? You know, because there, I mean, there's several things that aren't there and, and you know, it's kind of grandfathered, I mean, probably can't really use that word because you're doing this, but, but are, are there some things that you'd recommend more than others? And then I'm assuming that it's based on how much money they have in their budget to be able to do it. So it's kind of working with the world headquarters to do.
Yeah, you know, Parks and Recreation Department receives most of their funds from the general fund as compared to like one of our utilities, like the electric department or the water and wastewater departments that are enterprise funds and, you know, kind of have their own collection of dollars that they you know, throw at these type of improvements. So I think we've seen better examples from the new buildings that we created out at the West Water Treatment Plan as well as the electric building on Devera Road. They don't necessarily have the same amount of funds to throw at that, but I think a hierarchy for, for us, you know, that are certainly achievable and that, that people, they're willing to agree to would be the color of the building, you know, white is kind of not viewed as something that, that, that blends in well with our environment. I think adding windows to that facade would could certainly help improve the aesthetic as well. But again, you know, I, I think it's important to remember what they came from and we're improving on all of the aspects in that regard for sure.
So then, then one other question. So who, who is the applicant's board? I mean, you said that like, let's say we
City Council.
City Council. Okay. So, so we said, okay.
Yeah. So I, I, I think, you know, if you were to propose something that did cause some increase in, in price to the project, you know, they, they would probably be willing to have that conversation, but we certainly do want to be respectful and try to keep the, the costs low because it was kind of an emergency situation. We ran into this building and, you know, this isn't, is an addition that really would just accommodate their use now. I mean, Dan feels that they're already almost overgrown on this building as it is. So it's, it's, it's space that's desperately needed today.
Joy?
Um, so you guys provided that table, which I love, that shows what the code requires and whether the applicant meets that, that standard because of the location and extent application, are there? If this were not, would the applicant have to apply for variances?
Correct.
Okay. So no, no variances are requested because it's a municipality that.
Yeah. And, and I, I think that's important point because that's why we're here. You know, this addition by default would be administrative
Right.
for the code, but you know, we, we knew there were some substandard aspects of the application and this is the process that we recommended from them.
Yeah.
Carol?
Uh, I just have one quick question at the bottom of that handy table you provided. It, under colors, it said it shall not include white, off-white or fluorescent, but the proposal is listed as light gray. So that would be compliant, right?
It's a little too light for my taste.
So it's almost, it's off-white, light gray. Is, is the existing building already gray or is there the option to change the color of the building altogether?
The existing building is too light for my taste.
So the, the proposal does not include repainting the existing part of the structure?
No, except for on the south side, it does include a more pronounced entry that I believe adds some texture and different colors of the brownish color. Come on.
Yeah, yeah. No, and I think the plan for us is to, oh, thanks for having me. Good evening. We're to, on the addition on the front side, to have that wainscoting to break it up, then also to repaint the existing, don't get me wrong, the baby blue building that's was lovely and all, but we want it all to match. So we just don't have eighteen hundred square foot, good-looking building with forty five hundred square feet of not so great looking buildings. Yes.
Great, thanks.
This is not, this is not a question, but I love that Matt Nineforce said, I don't know who drew these plans, but they are amazing. Right.
Was it him?
Well, so when we moved in, I think the first time we were in front of you a couple of years ago, and we were looking just to change the stormwater retention basin in the back of the building, just so we had more flat space. Matt took what was the original drawings and then drew in the stormwater for us so we could install with Streets Health, the encadment basin and yeah.
I know, I loved it. I loved it.
But there, there you go. I brought that picture back up here on the show. I mean, yeah, it, it is baby blue, but in my mind, white.
Just one quick thing to what Trent's saying, we can, happy to prioritize our, oh, thank you, you know, how we're able to spend our funding right now. Of course, we want the front facing in the expanded area to look the best we can make it look. If that means that we don't pave the back two thirds of the lot this year, well, you know, we're okay with that, you know? We'd like to to get the most we can out of the building right now. And the only other thing that would be important for us then is to get the curb and gun on the south end of the lot just so we're catching any stormwater that comes off of our lot or anything that currently comes off of Suckerfield Road. So we're working with Matt and Public Works to ensure that So we're working with Matt and Public Works to ensure that what we do ties in their future plans for Soccer Field Road. So curb and gutter, any stormwater drainage changes that are coming up, so.
And Jake tells us that in the next two or three years, I think, those improvements on the west side of Soccer Field. So, you know, if we're using dollars wisely, it's it's not something that we wouldn't want to install today anyways to tear up and possibly redesign later.
One more.
That's not what we were telling a development applicant, but taxpayer dollars.
Yeah. One other question is about where the Wayne's coating is. Is that going to be on the side facing Soccer Field and on the entry side?
Correct.
Just those two sides?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So around that the addition, you know, the new addition, that area.
So will the Wayne's coat will not be run across the existing building then?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. But I think we did, our detective will get some changes to the front entrance way on that south side as well. That faces the macho there that we could, you know, add something there texture wise to change it up.
This shows it just a little bit better, Carolyn.
Yeah.
The changes on both the south elevation as well as the street facing east elevation.
So that east elevation proposed that we're seeing now is just the addition, not the existing building, right?
Correct.
And those changes that Trent gave you, that's after my, you know, discussion, I guess, week or so ago that, you know, we're back to the architect and it had to add those windows in to see, you know, what's that look like and what? What changes can we make budget wise to make those things happen as well too? So.
And, you know, we'd like those to be at at eye level, obviously, but we also have to be concerned about security for this building. But, you know, even at that elevation, I think it will make that facade look slightly better. And I guess folks, it's a little bit of nice natural light within that space inside.
Are you saying that the east elevation that we're seeing here is going to have more windows on it than?
Yes, and that's what we passed out. Apparently, the code would require that that facade have a minimum of thirty percent coverage of glaze.
I think it's a great improvement.
So Trent, is posting required for for a location extent?
Yes.
Okay.
Probably notice, yeah.
And well, I think it's a great idea to have those windows and also to have that sort of display garden, if you will, landscape in front as an example of this is where we're wanting to head. I think that's terrific. And I'm wondering, there are there no sidewalks on this stretch currently?
No, there's not. Just to the south end of our entrance, there is a crosswalk that goes from the west side of Soccer Field over to the middle school.
Okay.
See, you know, talking with engineering, they were fine with leaving that as is for the time being. But I don't know, you know, what Public Works future plans are to extend the sidewalk all the way north to Dongan, but.
What do you think of the idea of doing like a flystone path or something or a soft path or something through that landscape area in the mind that maybe there eventually, the next property will be required to have a sidewalk? And it's sort of a park connection between?
Yeah, I think those kind of ideas are easy for us to implement.
That's the people to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And quite honestly, the the demonstration garden, it not only is, you know, aesthetically pleasing, but also for us allows for training opportunities because it will have irrigation.
So.
In there.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, it just allows for those opportunities for staff. So I think it definitely something we could support.
Well, yeah, I think that would, I would like to see that personally. Well, this time I'm going to, unless there's, okay, Carolyn has.
So with regards to the not providing a sidewalk, we're not quite meeting the minimum landscape standards, but I'm thinking we might be counting some of where the sidewalk would be as landscaping. So in the future, if the sidewalk gets put in, are we now way below the landscaping minimum requirement?
Dan may be able to, those are some of the details that I requested in terms of site percentages. Dan may be able to explain what those percentages are a little better.
I don't have the breakdown. I have where we're at so far as a preliminary landscaping plan and how we can add that in. But you're right, what what we have in our plan doesn't include that area outside of the property line.
Oh, okay. So the landscaping area that you calculated is just on the lot?
Correct.
Okay, so the city may require of itself a future sidewalk. But I definitely am in favor of George's idea of having a more soft path so people can get their next floor and see the native plants that maybe they'll use in their own gardens. Great, thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Comments? And then I'll open the this discussion up to the public. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this location and extent review? Seeing none here or online, I'll bring it back up to the Commission for a motion on Planning Item Fifty-three Twenty, Parks World Headquarters Building Addition. Carolyn?
I move to approve Planning Item Fifty-three dash twenty Location and Extents with the findings and conditions on page seven and as represented verbally, the soft path idea. Also.
And I have a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question.
What I have just one more, and I should have asked this prior, sorry. Was kind of, I was holding myself back, but then I just decided to go for it. Um, so this is being used for staff only. This is not space that's going to be used by the general public. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so the soft path is for staff then? Is what we're per- perceiving that?
It's for general public. I mean, it's it's like for a development, any development, you're you're, you have a sidewalk to nowhere a lot of times. We said somewhere. So so I mean, I'm assuming that the that the soft path is where a sidewalk would be in the future when you can afford to do a sidewalk. I mean, is that what you were?
Well, I'm saying if there are sidewalks, which from the direction it is to the top of the page here in the next development, that it connects to this, it could stay a soft path or a flystone path or whatever, and then go back to a sidewalk that exists now on the other end of the property. Just in lieu of a hard sidewalk, why, why do that when you have this demonstration garden? It seems it kind of flows.
Yeah, totally makes sense.
Satisfies the gap as well as bringing people through and in mind, you way better than a sidewalk start.
Right.
Well, you know, if we were to install a sidewalk, it has to meet ADA requirements and we have a surface that's suitable for wheelchairs and that type of thing. So we probably would have to make it concrete or hard surface, but I I like the, I like your feeling.
Make it a little circuity.
But I I think we could probably still do something nice on either side of that. I mean, there's a pretty wide space that between the property line and the road, the edge of the road today.
Great. I just wanted to clarify who who is using this space really.
Well, but I think it's a good point. I mean, I think the building is not necessarily open to the public. I mean, I'm sure if folks are requesting they want to come, they can, but you know, I think we would want to draw some folks there so that they can see some of the native plants that we that we want to promote.
I think that helps pick up the whole, you know, the baby blue and, you know, some of these other things.
I I think.
It improves the world discourse.
I imagine kids from the middle school possibly.
I was gonna say, maybe cutting through those parts. Well, I think it, and this is kind of a separate discussion, but I think it goes back to some of the things we talked about at the the Comp Plan Steering Committee, just having more areas that are perceived as open to the public that are beautiful areas in West Lumley. So to me, it reigns kind of cohesive with that though. So I like it.
We're not on the commentary part of this discussion. I, you have a motion.
I did.
We have a motion. We're we're having discussion.
I was like, oh my gosh.
You understand the comments.
And I should have asked, Joy, do you, or I'm not sure why you did it to me, but who picks the color of this?
Oh, I, I mean. Anytime usually with colors, I always go to the females of the office because scientifically, women can see more hues than that. I'm serious. That's true.
And they don't let, they don't let me pick colors anymore because I'm the one who picked the brown for the fleet building. And you can't see it driving by, but they don't love the brown.
Trent's a ninja mouth.
Okay, call the question. Oh, yeah, question. Empty seat now? For Planning Item Fifty-three Twenty. The passage you have to say.
Thank you all.
Thank you for all your efforts.
Thanks.
Thank you.
If I just tell the art.
Thank you.
It does, yeah. It's the world headquarters. I always wondered if it's the other name. I meant to ask.
Okay, item, I knew item B, Planning File Oh-seven-twenty-two, Code Amendments to Title Oh-seven-oh Development Standards in Regards to Landscape. And Hannah, please.
So this is your last item and it might be a lengthy discussion. If you want to take a bathroom break, just a suggestion.
Yeah.
I see some nods.
Okay. Five minute recess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's Amber's fault.
I know, but where am I?
So this is, as I said, Planning File Seven, Seven dash two-two, Code Amendments to Title Oh-seven-oh Development Standards in Regards to Landscape and Hannah's here.
I am. Good evening, Planning and Zoning Commission. All right, much awaited, highly anticipated landscaping code revisions. It's okay, you can applause. Yes. So a little bit of background, you guys already know it. Obviously, drought resiliency and water infrastructure has been a pretty high priority topic for the city recently with events that we've experienced. We also have numerous model codes that have been adopted by other jurisdictions as great examples that staff has looked at after the July twenty-twenty-one Planning and Zoning Commission Work Session that we had. Some of you were at that discussion where we talked about drought resiliency and the landscaping requirements in our municipal code and how they could be improved. So since that very short time ago, staff has incorporated those recommendations into the proposed code amendments that are before you tonight. And in that time, we did do a comparison of other jurisdictions and found some model code languages from various agencies as well as municipal examples that are lauded as good examples in Colorado to model our recommendations off of. So we got feedback from Planning and Zoning Commission. I would say staff took that football and ran, and we'll see where we landed tonight. One thing that we found across the board in the municipal examples is that all.
Number of persons served and frequency of use. Location and proximity to similar turf areas, public access, proximity to roadways, and presence of facilities and other recreational amenities. So, something for you to think about, but that is an allowance for high use and recreational components to still be allowed this very, what I'm told, and I know, is very durable grass and can withstand that type of use. Other types of grasses do not hold up as well. So without that allowance, your parks could see some pretty heavy degradation in, in what's offered there now. Something for your consideration there. And the final component of this is irrigation system design. So we have incorporated many of the recommended zero escape principles on irrigation, soil moisture sensing device. With correlating to hydro zones. Low volume, that's supposed to say drip, not drop. Same thing, right? Or subsurface irrigation systems shall be used in the following conditions. This is important because it does specify. So you'll have, a landscape plan will have to indicate what type of, you know, is it sprinkler heads? Or subsurface low drip irrigation? And so in all non-turf grass areas, this will be the type of irrigation required. And where any one dimension is less than six feet in width and surrounded by impervious surfaces. So what this is really getting at, turf grass, obviously. Sprinkler is more, most efficient for that type of plant, but in all other areas, and especially in small areas. Where you possibly end up spraying the sidewalk as well, along with your plants. That would not be allowed to be a irrigation system type. You'd have to alter that, alter that zone. And then finally, we also included some initial code amendments to seventy seventy thirty, our definitions section. We've added definitions for functional turf and everything goes along in the waiver. Discussion points. So applicability to single family and duplex application, as I pointed out. The turf limitations, do you support prohibiting the use? Or would you rather limit the high water turf to certain scenarios? Within the language that I provided you in the code, there's comments on the side where I have indicated some of that language. If you did not get a chance to see it, I'm happy to go over it, the other options outside of prohibiting. Planting strip requirements and prohibiting turf in areas under a certain width surrounded by pavement. One of our tables in the landscaping code does call for turf. In the sometimes very narrow planting strip, it's a minimum of five feet, but that could be considered a small area. So whether or not you guys want to put, want to remove that as an option of putting turf in there or specific types of turf. Discussion there. And finally, licensed landscape architect. See if I can sum this one up, I might call on Jen for some assistance on this one. So in our code currently, we do not have, we do not list that a licensed landscape architect is required for all landscape plans. And as Jen has done some research for me, state law does have criteria for when that is required versus not, which is what we have usually fallen back on in the community development department. So, state law requires landscape plans to be stamped by a landscape architect for projects other than residential projects or multifamily for four or fewer units, not including common areas. So some of the model codes that we looked at, a licensed landscape architect was a requirement. We are adding in complexity to our landscape code. And so that might be something you want to think about if we require it or not. There is a cost to that and also just the amount of time it takes to submit a landscape plan with that, if you have to go and get that particular. So if we want to include that language, or if we want to, like, above and beyond what the state says, that would be something for you to comment on. But at the very minimum, we would follow the state requirements. So included in your staff report is the usual review criteria and analysis for a code amendment that you shall consider prior to making your recommendation. So those are consistency with the comprehensive plan and other city policies, does not conflict with other provisions of this code. Necessary to address a demonstrated community need, necessary to respond to substantial changes in conditions and/or policy, and is consistent with the general purpose and intent of this code. Staff provided a brief synopsis of that in your staff report. I think we can all agree, points three and four about demonstrated community need and necessary to respond to substantial changes are pretty well covered in the events that we've seen and how things are going globally, if not locally. And staff has, believes this to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and upholding those goals and city policies, does not conflict with other sections of this code, and is consent, is consistent with the general purpose. We did have some meetings for agency comment. We met with Parks and Recreation and Public Works to discuss the general outline of where we were going, and they gave quite a bit of feedback and advice, and all of that was incorporated into the proposed language tonight. Staff is planning to hold additional discussions on this proposal after Planning and Zoning Commission gets done discussing it and giving your points, because it will likely involve or a necessary review again by staff before we bring it to city council. So there may be minor changes from what you approve tonight. We're going to take, or approve or deny, actually, you've got an option there. We're going to take that, run it back through all of our department review to make sure that it matches up with what parks needs, what public works needs, what our water infrastructure needs, and make sure we've got that entire package that we bring to city council. I just want to mention that so that you don't feel that something was missed or intentionally left out or changed without your knowledge. That will just be the staff review that happens between now and then, if you choose to move this item forward. Alright, action item and staff recommendation and suggested findings. So this is consideration of code text amendments to municipal code section seventy forty fifty, landscaping, screening and fencing, and section seventy seventy thirty, all other terms defined. Staff is recommending approval with your discussion, and we have included the suggested findings on page five of the staff report and also included on this slide below. Thank, yep. So that is my presentation. Dan is staying on for any questions that you might have pertaining to Parks and Recreation. So if you want to prioritize those questions first, it's your priority. Thank you so much.
Great, thanks, Hannah. So, commissioners. Thoughts, questions, comments? Well, questions.
I almost wonder if it makes sense to go back to that list of questions you had, Hannah?
Sure.
And maybe address them in that order. And then you can, of course, cover missing.
Fire away.
Joy, please.
So of course, just some of the thoughts I have around single family units. My understanding is this will be for new construction. Really only, right? Because we're not gonna, we're not gonna go approach people that already have existing homes and make them change anything. So it's moving forward with new construction. Is there a way to codify that developers build, like if a developer goes in and builds attractive lands, parcels, you know, over a certain amount, that then they would be required to adhere to these standards versus just somebody going in and building their own home? That's just kind of a first thought I had, if that even makes sense on any level. But the other thought I had regarding that was if these apply to single family homes and I go and build a home, then I'm initially required to put those into place. Am I then required to adhere to those standards from that point on? So say I just want to put in my own little rose garden, but it's a heavy water garden, it just seems like a nightmare to enforce.
Couple of questions I hear in there.
Lots, lots of buzz.
The most recent one first, since the one I remember. So yes, enforcement of landscaping code can be somewhat cumbersome after the fact. We do this currently. If you have an approved landscape plan that was submitted with any of your applications, and we find that you're not adhering to it later, we can actually enforce on that.
Okay.
So we've done that mostly now with commercial projects that have a la, approved landscape plan. Really this comes up when there's a change and the landscaping is reduced. And so staff might notice or we might get a complaint saying, hey, they just ripped out seven hundred square feet of that nice garden landscaped area. We'd go and we review their approved landscape plan, and if it doesn't match, we would contact the property owner for remediation of that aspect to put the landscaping back in. So this is adding a lot of complexity, as I noted. And yes, you're absolutely right, adding single family and duplex, which is on the lower scale, would add some more of those components and might be very challenging on enforcement side. To your other question of when this does apply, so I'd call your attention to the applicability section that's currently in our landscaping code. It does state, so this is stating what is required to abide by these regulations currently, and if, and if moved forward, the new ones, new development and redevelopment. And redevelopment is, you know, unless you meet the exemptions that are listed, which is single family and two-family currently. Mixed use or non-residential uses on a lot that is less than five thousand square feet. Expansion of an existing structure or uses by less than twenty-five percent gross floor area, provided that any existing compliant landscaping remains unaltered. So it's not just new construction. It will also apply to expansions if they are over that twenty-five percent gross floor area. Just to, to be clear on what this would currently apply to unless you guys decide to change it. Good points.
I would just echo, I think it would be very, very complex to add single family homes to this, just for a number of reasons. I mean, ideally.
Single family or single family and two-family?
I think, I think single family or duplex.
Yes, so what, I mean, and I guess this would be more of a question for how you came to, if it is like a duplex, is there a formula to say, like, if it's a bigger development, it's gonna use more? Like, if they're kind of minimal developing a landscaped area, because I've seen that all the time. But yeah, a duplex, they're actually going all in on using water and all this kind of stuff. Like, has there been some sort of, like, look at the differentiation between how much water is being used in like a larger development versus a duplex home? Because, I mean, I think there's been studies out there where they do show, like, these larger developments, they don't use as much water because they are trying to minimize, like, the use of how they're watering their area and things like that. Whereas a duplex, they're just, they lay down the turf and then they're just watering like crazy. Has there, is there any, did you guys look at any data analysis or anything like that in regards?
So we have numbers back to our lovely system improvement fee spreadsheet. Rational nexus and plans done by previous agencies to look at, well, quite a few uses and how much water they use. So in our current code, based off reports that we received, a, a single family home up to four bedrooms with thirty-five hundred square feet of landscaping uses, on average, three hundred and fifty gallons of water a day, or that number is one hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty gallons a year. I look at that a lot. So, when we're talking about, you know, our single family homes better at water conservation landscaping versus duplex, anecdotally, I would say no, because single family and duplex don't need to come in with the landscaping plan. They're obviously limited to thirty-five hundred square feet of any type of landscaping unless they want to pay more in our system improvement fees. It goes up if you go above that number. But our, as we can see, and, and Matt Langhorst, our public works director, has given presentations to city council. Our watering in residential makes up a large part of what we see, especially in the summer when it comes to water usage for outdoor irrigation. That's, I mean, we've got the numbers for all of it, but it's a component. We don't necessarily break down single family versus duplex versus more. Large apartment complexes, even medium apartment complexes, tend to have less outdoor watering areas because there's a lot of units. So for, if you had ten single family homes and ten units in an apartment complex, the ten single family homes are going to be using more water. I guess, if that got to your question, might be rambling at this point.
Yeah, no, that's, that was kind of like the point I was thinking.
Okay.
In my mind, and just trying to make it in a roundabout way. But like, as far as like turf limitations, which I guess, we're not there yet. We're not there yet, okay. I'll say, hope please. Hope please.
You know, I guess, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the single family duplex. For, for some of the data that you talked about. I guess where I struggle though with is a licensed landscape architect. For those, I mean, you know, you're trying to get your costs and you, I mean, it's just one more thing, not only the cost, but it's another person you gotta get, you can't find them. It's another thing, it's just, it's just a pain in the butt. But, but I think having, having the standards there of here's how they are. And I've, you know, I've got other questions on how to enforce it, who's measuring four inches of lulk, who's that? Thirty-six inch, you know, how do you do that? But, 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 I think it should be for single family and duplex. And that, that's, that's my own opinion from building a lot of stuff. And, and a lot of times when you build into a development, there's, there's, you know, design codes and all of that stuff. You gotta work within that new subdivision that George is developing, you know, whatever kind of thing that you have to do. So I guess, I'm, I'm even kind of used to having to do that from when I used to do that sort of thing. And, you know, I, I, I think it's, it's making a statement of what you care about as well. I think that, that for me, complication, this is, this is good. It, I mean, it needs to be something that makes it be simple. Because when I read all this code, it's like my head starts spinning. And if you're, and if you're a homeowner, let's say you're doing your own house, you hired an architect, and you're kind of working through this thing, but you're trying to do that, how do you make it be somewhat simple? And, and also the number of plantings, this is my own personal opinion, a lot of times maybe it's not even the city, but it's, might be the HOA or whatever you're working to. They have a huge amount of plantings that, to me, it seems like we, we tend to overplant, and especially new when, when we're doing a, building a new house. And, and, and they're all small plants, and then they grow up, and then they rip out two-thirds of them because they're overgrown in five years. So I, I, I think we need to be intelligent for, for, for how we do that. And I think that's, because, you know, if you have five times the number of plants that you're gonna need in, in ten years, you're overwatering those to begin with as well. So, I know I'm kind of rambling on beyond the single family duplex, but those are a couple of issues that I kind of have with it, you know. Do you need a landscape architect? And I'm not jumping out of turn here, but, but I think if you're gonna do that, you know, how do you make it be not, not cumbersome for the, for that homeowner? Or, you know, or the person who's doing the duplex, you know, how do you make it not be that? But I think it's, it, it seems like it's the right thing to do. And I only listened to Matt that time when, in June or July, when he spoke to us here. But, you know, he was pretty, and he's a big guy, anyway.
Yes, I don't quite have his presence.
No, you don't have his presence, but, but anyway, that's my.
So, before Amber yells at you all that this is the question section. Got you, girl. I will make one comment and then go to Amy. On the, if you're thinking about supporting the single family duplex aspect, but you're worried about the licensed landscape architect, we don't have to include that. It could stay as a current.
Like the state law, which.
It could, and, and that will definitely be, you might not have a hundred percent compliance. Let's be honest, we don't have a hundred percent compliance with anything. But it would catch enough, maybe, that it made a difference. You might think about that.
Well, but, but, I mean, you even stated that, that you're now a pseudo landscape architect. So, but, but I mean, I mean, I, I think.
No offense to actual landscape architects.
I mean, when, when, when I submit my site plan, as, as a builder, whatever, I mean, you go through the site plan and, you know, I'm saying, here's what's irrigated, you know, here's, there's a checklist that you just go through and you have these things in there. You know, pretty much everybody except maybe Carolyn, they, they sprinkle their yards and do that sort of thing. I mean, so, so they're gonna go through that sort of thing. I mean, it's not a landscape architect, but it's not a big project. Anyway.
Sure, sure.
I was gonna point that out, because we don't have to include that.
Excellent point, Commissioner.
And I was just gonna say, could we, instead of making it a requirement, could we just incentivize it and say, if you as a developer choose to take these actions in your landscaping, could we give them a reduction in fees of some sort? Or, I don't know what that would look like, but instead of it being something that we're going to enforce, it would be it would be an option and incentivized, I guess. On some level.
So you're saying that it's optional, whether you do it or not?
Yeah, because I feel like with single family homes, I just, I feel like enforceability is the question for me. Like, how do you enforce that over a long period of time? It seems easy if you're going to require a developer who's coming in to develop fifteen houses to say, yeah, you make them do it, and it seems, you know, fairly easy to do that. But with, I don't know, individual homeowners, it just seems hard to, hard to enforce.
Good point. And the spreadsheet in front of you that I handed out does have some components that other communities such as Aspen and I believe Boulder, maybe Westminster as well. They include inspections, they include the licensed landscape architect, but many of them still exempt single family and duplex to a certain degree. So, I mean, you can really cater this to what you want to get at, is my point. You guys are bringing up excellent ideas. We can definitely take a look at using the carrot instead of the stick for this component, if you'd like to rather apply that to the single family and duplex category, or at whatever threshold you want. But we do have leeway here to cater this to our specific needs.
And maybe it comes as a form of an incentive for a while until, until we have fine tuned the multifamily and the really big users, and then we can implement restrictive language later or something.
Just for clarification on your idea, are you suggesting incentivizing for only single family and duplex?
That's correct. Yeah, thank you. Single family.
Are we gonna vote on these things individually? Because, I mean, the only reason I'm saying that is that if we lump it all together, it's gonna be wicked complicated.
I think we could.
It's way much.
We do have legal tonight on Zoom. Richard is not sitting with us present, but he is available for such questions on making motions. If you want to break it apart or make a very lengthy motion with lots of changes. Start writing now.
Yeah, so I would actually like to see the water conservation applied to single family and duplex, but I do understand it would be difficult to enforce. Kind of like if we put a limit on how much water you can use, like, is that falling on the utility billing ladies to say, oh, we, we, they've reached your maximum water allowance, now you're shut off? So, that, that, in terms of the water budget, the spreadsheet that also would be difficult to monitor and enforce. Like the applicability of a single family and duplex. Now, I have a few other things that aren't specifically in these categories. I grow food in my front yard, and I put little signs out there so people can see that I'm growing food. Now, basil and tomatoes are fairly high water use. So does that, would that in any way prevent people from growing food gardens? I mean, if it's a relatively high water use, but it's not just decorative. I mean, should there be some language in there about food, herbs, medicinal gardens?
Was, was it Westminster, somebody? I read that somewhere in some of this information, that there was some reference to food herbs.
It would be excellent if you could recall which one. I don't doubt. My apologies. I've read a lot of code in the last couple of weeks, so they kind of melt together. I, we can certainly go back, and that was something that we did discuss in our staff meeting. I didn't see a lot of examples of it, but it's certainly something that staff could go back and, and.
I was just flabbergasted that it wasn't in all of them. I mean, I don't mind if we make up our own rules, maybe all, you know, vegetable, herbs and medicinal gardens are counted as low water use. You know, and not, it's not gonna be like zero escape.
Right. If it's something that P and Z would like staff to look at and see if there are recommendations for this particular aspect, we can certainly do that, because I, I will admit that I didn't have a lot of time to focus on all the principles. So I am very happy that you brought that up. Jen would like to say something.
It is that Westminster landscape area, areas dedicated to edible plants such as orchards or vegetable gardens are not included. They're not counted in the landscape area.
It could be an exemption.
Yeah. But say you get a growing, I don't know, something to make lotion, say lemon mom. You know, you don't actually eat it, but you still are producing it for your own medicine. You know, what if you're growing grain for your chickens? People aren't eating it. But I think there should be a sort of a garden component that's either exempted or treated differently than an average high water usage.
Agricultural.
Yeah, yeah. Micro agricultural or whatever you would call it. A couple of other things I'm just gonna bring up now, because I've got the floor, that I noticed in the other codes. One of them was stormwater management, and this came out of the Aspen code. Nine of sixteen, they incur permeable surfaces. And this kind of came up when we looked at Iron Mountain Hot Springs, there are requirement to put asphalt on their huge parking lot next to the river. I think part of, you know, water conservation and water quality is gonna be based on installing permeable surfaces, not just impermeable asphalt and concrete. You know, there's all kinds of new products on there, gravel paper, things that the water can perk down through. In, in the big picture, water quality. One thing that Boulder had in their code on page four of six was that you can use rocks, but they can't be bigger than three inches in the public right of way or reduce to sidewalks. Like, when you used to go to Safeway, you'd get out of your car and you'd have to like climb across these boulders, and it's just stupid.
That was something that I, I looked at as well, because we've had some comments on certain sections of the city that have somewhat large boulder-y sections. So if that's something you want to throw in to reduce the size of what that could be?
It's, it's, it's a hazard, you know, and it's a hazard for the city. Yeah, you'd be liable if someone twisted their ankle on those giant cobbles, right? Or busted their teeth out on the pointy granite next to the path where you think you'd be okay to fall off your bike. So yeah, I'd like to see.
Personal experience. It sounds very close to your.
Yeah, the rocks can really get me worked up. So yeah, that adjacent to sidewalks and in public right of way, food gardens. One other thing I saw in the Westminster code was their outlawing Siberian Chinese elms, Russian olives and tamarisk. We might already, they might not be on our approved list of plants, so that might cover that one.
Interesting. I challenge any developer to come in and say that they're planting tamarisk. But Jen, Jen has a comment here.
I, I think that there is a section of code that has.
We do.
I don't know if tamarisk is in it, but I think, but there is, there are, we do, we do have adopted the weed, the noxious weed list, which may have some of those items on it.
Yeah, either make sure they're not on the approved plant list, or they are on the, you're no way allowed to use those list. Oh yeah, so I basically went through my own yard and tallied up how many square footage, what's my square footage I use for edibles? And it's eighty-five square feet, so it's not huge. Now, if, if we apply the turf limitations or the high water usage limitations at fifty percent, you know, I'd probably still be okay. Which, let me use that as a segue into turf. Like, high water turf is, well, if we approve it this way, prohibited. Does that mean that you can't have any moan, green grass or? can't have any mown green grass for children and pets?
So that would fall under that waiver, um, section that allows, it's not listed as an exemption. It's a waiver that you would have to come in and show how you met, met the criteria of the use, high traffic, recreational amenity. There's also some pet relief areas.
That's only applicable to a veterinarian's office or boarding facility.
I understand. Thank you. I wrote that, so I didn't know that. But so, but so that's, as, as what we presented to you, the waiver for high water use turf would have to meet that criteria to be allowed.
Or even a ten by ten patch.
Yep.
If it's prohibited altogether.
Yes.
But, so my question is, are there, are there types of turf that aren't high water use turf that people could just plant a different kind of grass?
Absolutely. And that would be in the plant list. So there's, there's quite a bit, um, in some of those plant lists that I, um, included in the staff report, uh, but not as attachments because they were massive. Um, there is quite a bit of turf grass that you can, that is not in the high or very high use categories. It's just not, as Parks will tell you, it will not hold up if you're using it for, um, if you're constantly using it, if you're constantly setting out a picnic blanket on it, it's going to deteriorate. So those aspects would be covered under the waiver, but you could certainly plant the other lower to medium water use grass, uh, species seed mixes, which, um, Parks can actually tell you they're, they're doing, um, in other areas.
Right, yeah.
I guess we'll carry on and then maybe finish up the single family and duplex before get into anything else.
Oh, I thought we had moved on to, I'm ready for her. Anybody else, single family?
I.
Yeah.
Plan, oh, by the way, though, I think requiring a licensed landscape architect for any old project would be really absurd. It's pretty easy to make a landscape plan.
So you're suggesting that there could be a requirement to single family and duplex for landscape design without having it be stamped?
Yes, just like the, the state law requires here.
Yeah.
I think that'd be completely adequate.
Can I ask for clarification on that point? Is that, you don't think it's appropriate for single family and duplex or appropriate for any?
Uh, I don't think the licensed landscape architect would need to be retained for single family and duplex.
Okay.
Or, you know, less than four units.
Less than what the state, you're okay with the state requirements?
I like the state requirements.
Wonderful. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Joy, thank you very much.
Um, I'm just, well, I guess to Amber's point, are we gonna make motions as we go or at the end? What does Richard recommend?
Let me stop sharing my screen. Um.
Good evening, everybody. Um, so I guess, um, we have a couple of options here. Um, it, it probably depends on what level of consensus you all feel you are finding right now. Um, if there's still, um, some disagreement on some of the matters, um, then one option would be to, you know, basically have a main motion presented to, uh, adopt the code amendment as recommended by staff. Um, and then you could have subsidiary motions to amend, um, on specific matters. Um, and I know this could be a little cumbersome, but we could get through it. Uh, I guess the other option would be if you feel like there is consensus, uh, building on all of these points, um, then you could say, you know, move to approve as, as amended, um, by the discussion of, of the planning commission and basically trust that staff has, um, channeled your, um, your preferences, um, for any, any changes.
I guess my procedural question is, we're, 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 we crossed into the gray area between the question asking and the comment. So how, I don't know, our consensus building is by sideways asking questions, assuming we're all sort of, can we hear?
So perhaps it would be good to ask, ask any real questions of staff and of Parks that you have right now, and then we can get into more of the council discussion where you, where you tell each other what you want and work it out and then get to the motion section as, as Richard just described. And either you get to the point where you only need one main motion or with the, um, subsidiary.
I get, I guess I'm afraid if we do one motion, I mean, there's a lot of stuff in here. So if we do one motion, we're gonna lose it. So, I mean, you know, I mean, we're, we're, we're gonna lose, uh, our discussion we just had on, you know, there, there's gonna be some we think this way, some we think that way. I, I guess I kind of at least have liked getting some sort of agreement or disagreement for us, you know, like, 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 single family and, you know, do we think we're good with that or not? I mean, we're kind of all talked about it now. Maybe we just, maybe it's not a real motion, but we know what we've agreed on as we, as we've talked about. But otherwise, I guess I'm kind of concerned that, I mean, there, there's, there's a lot of stuff in here. And, and, um, so it would be easy to get lost on, as we go down this circuitous path, having this conversation. That's all.
So Richard, can we, can we weigh in while we're asking questions and kind of figure out what the consensus is on this particular, on the single family aspect and then hold our motion till the end? Or is that?
Um, you, you can do whatever you want. Uh, you know, I, I think the way. It's not, you know, it's not going to change the substance of the motions that are made. Um, you know, I, I guess it's a matter of, of preference, uh, if you think it is more efficient. Once you're in, you know, once a motion has been made and then you have that debate, um, that could be a more efficient way, uh, to, to, I guess, cabin each individual item.
So, I mean, then, then to me, it seems like we should make the motion now.
That's right.
And then, and then, and then have the conversation. It's the same thing. I mean, we're making the motion and then we go through each discussion on each item to figure out what's there and then we're mending the, it's kind of like real time amending the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and you can still ask questions. Um, and I would, you know, I, I would just remind you, uh, to open it, open public comment. I don't know if there's anybody in the room, but before any motion is made.
Right.
So now you understand why I called for a bathroom break.
Yes.
This is gonna require a snicker, so.
Usually this is your line, but any specific questions for Parks while we have Dan here of what they're doing or how this fits in with our community amenities that the city actually has?
I just, I had a question about the turf. Um, just because you said you've used, um, low water, or I don't know if I'm using the correct verbiage, but, um, my biggest concern honestly is like golf courses because I know they use such a, or I perceive them to use a vast quantity of water. And, um, but my assumption is that they can't use, uh, low water grass because it doesn't hold up, is what you're saying, essentially.
Right. And so that's why we're evaluating all of our park spaces for where that high water turf needs to be. Uh, two rivers in the, in the ball field, in the ban shell area, the area north of the, uh, the bike path between the path and the interstate, we're, we're gonna switch over to a more native mix there because it's not an area that gets, you know, nobody's really sitting out there, you know, using it for active use, you know? So how can it look good, but yet how can we conserve water in it? And I think, you know, our tough thing is gonna be to educate, uh, folks in town of, just because we say it's native, doesn't mean it's just unkept. Uh, it looks bad.
Right.
You know, so, so does that help a little bit to?
I think my, I'm most concerned with like private developers developing golf courses that are not enjoyed by the general public other than, you know, people that can afford them, which, you know, that's an amenity, that's great. But are there grasses that, um, are conducive to being used on golf courses that are lower water?
Yeah, there definitely is. And that's why we're, uh, we, we shared with Hannah, we're looking at what our grass mix looks, looks like, you know? So if it's, uh, blue drama or, you know, something else that's a, still hard enough that can take, um, that use, there are options for sure. Yep. It doesn't have to always just be Kentucky bluegrass.
Right, right. So I would like to see, I mean, it seems like it should apply to those vastly, um, watered areas as we can and not just be an exemption somehow.
So just to that, um, and certainly a consideration, I think we all know that golf courses are high water users. Um, they would meet the qualifications under that waiver as a high traffic recreational amenity. So if we, if we wanted, perhaps it's more working with golf courses to evaluate, I don't even know. I'm not a golfer. How many golf courses do we have in one night whole course? But we might get more. Is Joyce's point?
There's no.
It's a good consideration.
Never mind, never mind.
I appreciate where you were going with it. And I'm curious now.
I think it's more just a global concern, but that doesn't apply to the city. You're right.
So I, I've got a question in regards to, um, the, let's see, the following list of the specific of my, mountain regions of Colorado. And there's various things listed there. Are there, is any of this produced by CSU or others that is specific to the western slope, which is, from my counting, different than the eastern slope or the eastern plains and far western, you know, what I'm saying?
So, uh, the Green Co. plant list, um, that Aspen uses, um, is Colorado specific and then it has Front Range and Western Slope and by elevation.
So that there is a separate list for the Western slope and in that.
Yeah, it's in a beautiful spreadsheet.
Well, I saw, I saw the spreadsheet, but I wasn't sure if that was statewide because there are other regions that are within sixty-five hundred, eighty-five hundred feet in the, in the state that aren't on the Western slope.
Let me bring it up just so I can show you. I'm gonna share screen real quick. It's a big spreadsheet. So, um, and I think it, this was in your packet.
Yeah.
But so, oh, I see, I see where your question is actually coming from. Um, the one that I included, oh, here it is. So we've got plant type, east slope. I don't know what the votes means, but we'll get to that. West slope, mountain, all regions. Um, so they do divide this and, and they're, this is the one Aspen has in their plan, but if you take it from the Green Co., which is from CSU Crop Efficient Survey, um, it actually has elevations listed also within this.
What does it mean if the box is blank?
Don't claim it in that region?
Maybe it's not recommended? I've got some questions. This is not my spreadsheet. If it was my spreadsheet, that box would have something in it. But yeah, so I, and this is why I didn't want to make a recommendation on what plant list we're using because I didn't feel comfortable. I actually need to consult more of the experts on, on which one we get to. Um, but I did come across several. Um, so, so a little bit more research, but we definitely want to be west slope and as locally specific as we can on what's going to work.
Yeah, okay. Um, and when, when I built our house, um, we were covered by the hillside preservation that was applicable at the time. And, uh, one of the, the things that we were, um, required to do is to use, um, grass mixes that were fire, I don't know, I say fire resistant, but they're less apt to promote fire, wildfire than, than other things were. Without going, without going to Kentucky bluegrass or some other high water usage, which I would assume it also.
Firewise, firewise landscaping.
So, and, and I don't know if there's any place in our park system that that would be applicable to use. But you, you all, obviously you're all aware of that and, um, so you're considering this.
Yeah, absolutely. So that goes along with fire mitigation conversations with all of our urban wildland interface areas, you know, Wolfson and those kind of places that, yeah, that we're looking at that as well too for grass.
Are there any other, um, wildfire, wildfire, uh, mitigation practices being, uh, put forth as well?
Uh, yeah, for us, for refuel load reduction, you know, in the Wolfson area in particular when it comes to oak brush. But then also, yeah, what are we planting, you know, that we don't have large amounts of cheat grass? So how do we mitigate those issues?
Is there, does it make any sense to put that in the code?
It certainly makes sense. Um, I think Aspen, I think Aspen code had the firewise and possibly boulder. There were additional codes that had examples that included the water efficiency as well as firewise landscaping code. Staff did not get to evaluating, um, those aspects. So I can't really comment on what we would incorporate from them, but it's certainly something that's being considered.
Okay. Should we incorporate that at this time? I mean, it seems like from our, um, our initial code that we started with, which was absurd, as we reduced the numbers of plantings that were required. I mean, it was crazy.
Oh, yes, I recall.
And was to- totally contrary to water conservation, right? Um, and this is a great step forward, obviously. Should we continue that momentum or go ahead and process this and then do this again?
I think perhaps you could certainly make, um, a recommendation that you want that to be considered and maybe it's on the next round. Um, I know you don't want to miss your opportunity here, um, but staff really has not been able to evaluate the, what that actually means in adopting it and the impacts and be able to present to you. So I think it will take more time to incorporate that than possibly you want to take in moving this whole thing forward. But certainly if it's something that Planning and Zoning Commission would like staff to further evaluate and bring back, you could do that.
All right. So, um, anything, any other thing that has a question mark at the end?
I have a question mark. And is, um, and I don't know, my kids go play a lot of soccer, spend less time on soccer fields and all that kind of stuff. And I know when you go to other richer places, richer towns, you know, they have artificial turf kind of stuff. And I know there's a whole analysis done on that, uh, you know, over whatever, whatever the payback time is and all that. So, so are we looking at trying to do anything like that?
Made loosely, you know, I think that, you know, somewhere like, you know, Edwards, you know, they have pretty, uh, they have a great sports complex that is all turf, you know? They also benefit from a rent tax to be able to pay for that. But I think at, at some point, it's worth looking at. I know I've heard rumblings of other, um, entities that have looked at it as well too in the valley. Uh, it's just that initial, uh, cost upfront cost. But there is a benefit from a, a water saving perspective for sure.
Yeah, and, and maintenance. Well, and I'm sure there's maintenance still with that as well.
Yeah, there is, but you also extend, I think the other benefit with that though is extending your playing season. And that's what people really like, you know, in Edwards, that, you know, they, they sweep their fields all winter, you know, so they're available for use. Uh, for, you know, for us here, that would, you know, extend the playing season for most sports drastically, so.
Yeah, and a lot of it's probably RE1s, maybe switches, and I know, not you guys, but, but I know Glenwood Park and different places like that where there's a lot of the usage.
Right. With our, uh, master plan at Sayer Park, that's something that we looked at, at least for the infield there, you know? That changes a little bit now with, um, Sharvey Day's moving to two rivers. But is it a potential there at Sayer, you know, that'd be a great place for us?
Okay. My question also was about, um, uh, firewise design. Um, it seems pretty darn critical, uh, especially in certain areas of our town. And I would be hesitant to move ahead without putting it in there somehow. Is there a possibility to put it in, uh, like one of the exemptions that, you know, uh, staff could be approached with a firewise design and then be exempt from certain watering zones? With a firewise design and then be exempt from certain watering zones?
Sorry, I don't mean to stare at you blankly. I just, I don't know enough about firewise design, I think, to answer that question adequately. But there are certainly examples that were in the code. That we could look at and pose it to uh city council if you'd like something like that to be included and you want it to move along with this. We could take those and say, and, you know, relay, Planning and Zoning Commission really thinks this is an important aspect to include. Here's an example. And, and hopefully staff has enough time between now and then to also wrap my head around it, so I don't look at council like a deer in headlights.
I, I don't know a lot about it either. Um, it seems to be really catching on. I know those professionals who offer services and come in and evaluate. Your property, um, maybe if, if a professional had evaluated it, then you might be exempt from some of the requirements, you know?
I think we have some good model language to look to out there. So I can certainly see you guys adding that on as something that you want included.
And then who does this apply to? Does it apply to single-family homes again, right? And duplexes, or does it just the?
Blink blink.
I know.
I, I, I admittedly, I really don't know, so.
Yeah.
Um, you would, if you want this to be a part of it, you'd need to be comfortable telling staff to find the best practices out there. And include it for city council review, or at your option, if you don't feel that this um code amendment is ready. You can always continue something and ask for more information from staff to bring it back later. I can't guarantee when.
Right, and then just one more question I have. Are there any ideas on how? Um, municipalities who have adopted these strategies or these, this code, do they have um? Just data that, that suggests how helpful it is in water conservation yet?
I didn't come across any.
Yeah.
Like hard water numbers. That would be interesting. Uh, so I think Aspen updated, most recently updated their landscaping code in twenty nineteen.
Right, it's too, it's too soon.
I'm not sure about Westminster.
I think if anybody did Westminster, probably would have that, because all their code is, of water uses related to how much water they physically have. So that, that determines the amount of growth, how many single-family homes, how many multi-family homes.
So it's all tied together?
Yeah.
That's really interesting.
Because they know what they have concerning water rights, what they have.
Right.
So there's no, you know, magically not gonna appear, you know, more water in the bucket, so.
Right.
And uh, I will say, this got sped up in timeline. Because our public works department is having a work session with council regarding. Regarding all of these topics, and so we wanted this to be ready to, for that conversation, which is scheduled for. Momentarily, Jen will be able to tell you what that is. And so this could certainly, like a firewise aspect could be thrown into that conversation as well, but this, so I would not have gotten this to you. Had Matt Langhorst not told me that he's having this conversation with council.
Have we had discussion on tying our actual water um to development, like Westminster?
So I will say that um if you would like the full analysis of all the water, like, and everything that has happened since like nineteen eighty, I would suggest. No, Matt gave a, a presentation, um, but you know, that, the take home is that we had a. That we have more water rights. And we um have reduced the water usage since our kind of peak. But, and, and there is like an eight-page staff report that kind of drills down on it, and I can look in what, at what day that was. Um, I, I wanna say it was the first meeting in March? No, first meeting in February?
And it has exactly what Dan is talking about, right? And even by like zones of the city of how much water the city is basically capable of. So we could, we could find that and send that out, so you could listen to Matt's very awesome presentation. Who knows a lot more about those actual numbers in our water infrastructure system than I do?
During the four-eighty Donigan conversations, who I also put public works on the spot and had them come tell us about. The water availability, so that might be a good summary to go back to too.
And I would say this other is. Very, very, it's like the most comprehensive, so I would suggest actually that, that that's the one to look at. Uh, May fifth is when it is um on for uh at eight thirty AM.
And I had, I, I had one question, and Matt, I remember did a great presentation when he presented to us. That day back in June, and one thing he talked about was, I thought was, was a progressive. Billing thing that, 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 that if you were, if you used X amount of water, it's kind of like the Carolyn's thing, you wouldn't get shut off. But you'd pay twenty-five percent more if you, if you went, you know, in X plus. Two and then X plus four, it's fifty percent, I mean, it was, it was some graduated penalty. Thing that was in there, which, which I thought that was a good. Uh, you know, I mean, you can do all of these, you can do all of these things, but if people are cheating or whatever, that, that's the dollars and cents. Enforcement policy. I mean, is that something that was, that we talked about, or would that be something that would be in here?
I think that that may be part of that incentivization kind of conversation, or like de-incentive kind of conversation.
I mean, that's like, that's actually the water you're using, you know, you can kind of say, you know, the, the, the question was, is it really helping or not? Well, here's, here's what, you know, you get for this amount, and anything over that, you have to pay additional.
So it really hits home how much water.
It really hits home.
Um, that wasn't part of necessarily this code amendment discussion, but it could, it could be. Um, that obviously would need a greater discussion with Public Works and Finance Department, which are the two departments that deal with that most heavily. But good, good memory.
Any other questions? No, no other questions. No, I have to, I have to open this to, for public comment. And there's no one here and no one online, so I'll close the public comment. Here it, and bring it back to council commissioners for a motion on. Planning item oh seven dash twenty-two. Uh, consideration the code changes to title oh seven oh development standards in regard to landscaping, including but not limited to sections. Oh seven oh, oh four oh, oh five oh, and oh seven oh, oh seven oh, oh three oh. Uh, there's one action item and it is um. Staff is recommending approval with suggested findings on page five.
I move to approve planning item oh seven two-two, consideration of code changes. Like Chairperson Shaper said, with the findings on page five.
We have a motion. Okay, and a second. Further discussion. Well.
Would you like me to guide you topic?
Yeah.
Yes, do that.
All right, so I think one of the big questions is the single fan, the applicability of what this is going to be applied to. From what I heard previously, um, Commissioner Waller was in favorable, uh, was favorable of having single-family and duplex. Be required to meet these with some stipulations. Um, Commissioner White had some concerns about enforceability, so I did not get a full answer there. Um, Commissioner Cipperley uh agreed or was indicating that single-family um and duplex should be required to meet some of these. And that is what I got. So that's I'm gonna start you off with.
I guess I'll just, I agree with Carolyn, I, I would, I feel like we could do maybe a plan, but not a signed architecture, licensed architecture.
Of just the landscape architect.
Yeah. Um, as far as like the single family, I think for, to Pete's point, I think that it's good to have a plan. I don't know that it's necessary that this have to have, have assigned. I don't wanna, I don't wanna, my feeling about this, I don't wanna. And make it hard and pivot anyone moving a simple project forward, like I can't build my house and I can't find the license, the licensed landscape architect. I mean. That's kind of my thought on that particular topic.
Standards apply to single-family.
Yeah, I think, yes. I think the standards should apply, but I don't think that we have to have the, because I also agree with Joy, we can't enforce parking in this town. Who's out there measuring mulch? But we can try.
I will just be a rule-breaking gardener, I think. I mean, not really, I can't say that. I'm just never gonna build a home, that's all it is. I'm like, I, I just see that as a. Like, shut up, Joy, shut up. Oh, no, I was. No, I just, I just, from a gardener's perspective, if I had a home built for me. And I had a great plan in place, yeah, that's one thing, but then I'm gonna go and I'm gonna plant stuff, because that's. It, I'm, it's gonna be very difficult, I think, from an enforcement perspective to like. Oh, this is my high-watering zone, I can put, you know, my peonies here, but I have to plant Russian sage here. You know, like that, I, I think that's just from my own perspective, that's very challenging.
Can I clarify, is that a no then to single families?
No, I think I would rather see a carrot dangle.
Okay.
An incentive where, you know, people are, can choose to opt in.
I think I see a finger from Ms. Ooten.
And I was just, and, and I wasn't, you said peonies, so then I, I took my hand away, but um. Cause I, cause I thought the question may have been more to this vein of, do you want it to be edible landscaping and have an exemption for edible landscaping? And I will say that there are certainly codes that want to see edible landscaping. Included even in commercial projects, um, even like in their decorative landscaping because of that water use. And this idea that we should have food equity.
And I think the edible landscaping definitely needs to be addressed as an exemption, but um. Uh, for example, I don't have any turf in my, my yard, but I, I do landscape and I have perennial gardens. And so for me, I'm like, well, where's the equity there? You know, if I don't have turf. I, I don't know, I just, it seems really like it would be challenging.
If you'll allow me during your discussion. At the original work session, there was a heavy focus on this turf aspect. So perhaps to add more complexity. If you're on the single-family and duplex, perhaps there is only certain aspects of limiting turf allowance. Or um as the, I think, this was in the code language proposal. Um, I had under the turf prohibition, alternatives to outright prohibition. And there's an example um that limits high-water-use turf grass to no more than twenty-five percent of total landscaped area. Or um by use type, um, this was, single-family dwelling units shall not have turf in excess of a thousand square feet. Or ten percent of total lot area. Um, so, so perhaps you don't like applying this to everything to single-family? And maybe there's some high, high, high-hanging fruit, low hanging fruit, high priority, low hanging fruit, there we go. Um, that you would like to include as applicable.
So that's exactly what I was gonna say, because we do have to be careful, I think, I mean, I, I don't. Uh, you know, we're not, I'm not talking about my house, I'm talking about things that are going forward. And I do like the idea of adding the edible comment to, for edible gardens, because I don't wanna compare, this, I'm trying hard not to. Compare apples to apples, I love to garden too, but I also see the importance of water conservation. Especially with single-family homes and duplexes, because sometimes those are the most users of water. So I do like that idea, and I did see your turf mitigation comment in the packet. And I feel like if that's the angle we're going for, I think that's um, um, positive. Low hanging fruit. High ideals.
Well, I've been, I've been waiting for my opportunity to bring forth, bring forth my.
Oh, yeah, he brought this, yeah.
My uh reprint of an article that was in the Denver Post on uh March twelfth. It's called Cash for Grass, and it's, even though it's Colorado, it's not talking about marijuana. It's talking about a, a bill that's been introduced in the House of bipartisan, uh, supported apparently, House Bill eleven fifty-one in the state of Colorado. To pay people to remove uh non-native grasses from their lawns. And it's a, it's a program that has been done in Las Vegas and. People that live there take ninety percent of the water from the Colorado River and the rest underground, and they uh have saved. A huge amount of water by cutting back on lawns and lawn mower. I don't remember where the uh numbers are, but. Uh, translates into eleven point two billion gallons of water saved in just the last year. So I'm definitely in favor of him, in having this applied to both single and duplex. Because of the data that is presented here, it's, it's remarkable. Uh, how much water, and anecdotally, as you said, and a. It's probably next to agriculture, which I understand is the biggest use by far of the water out of the Colorado River. It's probably the second, I would, I would guess, so. That's my take on, on the single-family and duplex issue, but um. I don't know why, I, if a homeowner were building their own home, they couldn't take their, their survey plat and. A magic marker and say, this is where I'm doing this, and this is where I'm doing, doing that, and submit that as part of their plan without having to go to. A landscape architect, seems like an excessive burden for just that kind of development.
So, to sum up what I've heard, um, we have. Four uh commissioners that are for the topic of applying these standards to single-family and duplex. Without uh the licensed uh landscape architect requirement. And two, I wouldn't say that are like firm against, but have some serious reservations. That's where you're at.
If I could go back and say, limiting the percentage of turf, I feel like is one of the most important things that we could do in single-family and duplex. Maybe like was brought up, maybe we just apply a turf rule to single-family and duplex and leave everything else out so that we can move ahead.
I love that.
And I propose twenty-five percent maximum turf, so we can talk about that.
Took twenty-five percent of what?
Uh, landscape area.
Of the landscape area, not twenty-five percent of the gross.
Right, twenty-five percent of the landscaped area maximum to be uh high-water turf.
So where does that come from? Your twenty-five percent?
Westminster.
Boulder, I'm from Boulder.
It comes from Boulder?
Everybody loves to be like Boulder.
It comes from another model code.
And other load. And, and, and I guess, I guess to me, a lot of the conversation, you know, it's all about saving water, so I mean, I, I think it really gets to. To mass kind of thing of, here's, here's your water allowance, you go over that, you know, you pay more, and, and, and if. And if you reduce, and, you know, maybe you, you, you come in with, with. Here, here's what your plan is, and here's what you're doing, but, but, you know, how do you measure that, how do you force it? The only way you can enforce it really is here's your usage that you have. And, and as, as you use more, you have to pay for it, and, and, and for me, other than that, I think it starts getting too complicated. To, to say you can do this, you can't do that, this is my opinion, and then can you enforce it? It's like, like with houses, it's the same thing with houses, and not that I would ever do this, but. A lot of times after people get their COs, they add this or they add that, and that's kind of how, that's kind of how. That's kind of how I've heard of what people did. So, so I, I mean, I, I think it's, 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 it's like recycling, it's like a lot of things. You're trying to do the right thing, you're trying to be a role model for here's, here's what you stand for, for our community. I mean, I think it's a.
I think this is gonna, I think you're giving a point, a great point there, because I think it's gonna. Start the ball rolling in the community that this, we're, we're all, most of us are conscious of ecology and our, and our environment. And what's going on in the world, and we want to do our part to contribute to the improvement of that. And by setting these rules, I think we're going to involve the community and get people behind it ultimately. There's been pushback, a lot of people won't like it, but I think it's positive, it's gonna be positive in the long run.
But you're kind of saying, don't make the rules now that you were saying, apply them.
No, I'm saying, I believe with applying the rules, I mean, you know, I, I could argue about recycling,
Wait, right, right.
the truck that gets two miles a gallon blowing stuff into the air, taking, I mean, you know, you could, there's
Right.
a whole lot of conversation, you can get into a lot of things, it's like, what, what are the behaviors that you wanna mo- to model? And I, I mean, I think that's what it is, and I, and I think trying to enforce it, you know, you don't need to try to enforce it, I mean, I think, I think people are gonna do what they do, but in general, people are gonna put stuff in and they're gonna live by it, and if, and if they're planting a garden, they're taking out grass, or they're doing whatever kind of things they're doing, and that's where I think Max's thing is kind of the bottom line monitor kinda thing is what it is, but, but I think it's a statement for the community, and that, that, I guess that's kind of, that's kind of what I think on, on, so.
So how do we address the?
Yeah, where are we at?
The gardening, the gardening aspect, the agricultural quote unquote.
I think what I heard was a desire for an exemption for edible gardens.
Edible medicinal.
TBD on the exact language, but I heard what you said, um, so.
And it seems like that would be like some sort of administrative thing, don't you think, that, I mean, you know, that's up to staff to kind of see how that.
You mean if, like, someone comes in and says, I have an acre of marijuana, does that, that is edible? Does this fall under? Jen's looking at me like, oh, my god, woman. So, eh, just generally, do people, I heard two very strong proponents of the exemption for garden at all? Do, am I seeing some nods that that is general? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, during the pandemic, they made a huge deal out of planting a garden. You know, like, all across the nation.
Return the victory garden.
Every, that's right. Victory garden for rails, so.
Can't take that away.
Um, so then where you're at, you know, you guys kinda lost me as far as numbers.
I think Carolyn kind of made a, a pseudo motion to restrict the turf on single family developments to the twenty-five percent of landscaping. How does everyone feel about that? I mean, I'm on board with that, cuz I feel like turf is the big.
Yep, so I thi- I have, um, Commissioners White and Sipperly being supportive of that type of measure.
Alternative to them being subjected to the whole restrictive package.
So we're not here saying don't do the whole stream, you're saying not to go back to the new turf, and we don't care about it.
Uh, so how was it, we might start off.
So that gives you your pet relief area, that gives an area for kids to play. Yeah.
It, it keeps it sort of simple for the, for the administration.
But then you're not having to craft these hydro zones where you have high watering, low water plant areas, I mean, that seems to be pretty complex landscape design that a single family homeowner might have issues coming.
Irrigation plan, I mean, I've done irrigation plans, and when you do it, you, you work with, with someone who's helping you figure that whole thing out.
Yeah.
You know, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have drips here, and I'm gonna have turf here, I'm gonna have a garden, you know, you kind of do that whole thing when you build a house for your site plan, so.
So one point of clarification, I grabbed my own spreadsheet so I could remember what I wrote. Um, what we're proposing, so we have prohibited high water use turf specifically in the language. Um, but we also, outside of turf, we have included a high water zone limitation of fifty percent. So, so we've separated those two, we've said high water turf is not allowed, but your other high water plants, gardens perhaps, your tomatoes, your basil, I'm also a gardener, um, could fall into that fifty percent allowance. Sorry, I forgot that component, so just wanted to, there's an, there is a possible allowance for those aspects, but the turf only, the high water turf only is the thing that's prohibited.
So, so there's native turf, so that's what I heard.
There are native and low water.
Yeah, so you can have low water turf, and that could be more, right, so.
Or you could apply for the waiver, if you're like, a B, a B and B, and you have a, you know, high amenity area.
So what, how do you, how do you allow a, a high water zone fifty percent, like, say it can't be grass?
So, because there's a lot more high water plants than just turf, so we're allowing.
Well, I understand there are more, but I mean, if you say fifty percent can be high water, why can't they choose to be grass?
Because we've specifically listed as a prohibited plant type.
I know, no.
Okay, I'm missing, sorry.
Why should that be true?
Why should turf be prohibited?
Well, if you're gonna allow high water in fifty percent.
I think.
Why couldn't it be plants or turf in that fifty percent?
Sure, I'm gonna refer to the article that you just quoted, uh, actually, and, and there's evidence, though I can't cite exactly where it from at the moment, uh, but the most outdoor water usage goes to watering lawn and not other areas.
So, how, explain to me then how a, you have this fifty percent area, and you're gonna put high water plants in there? And so you're saying that you're gonna put less water in that fifty percent for those high water plants than you would in, if it were lawn?
That is what I'm saying, and I think Jen might want to intercede.
I, I don't have it right in front of me, maybe, I may, may not have it right in front of me, but I think that there was this idea that you, that there would be drip, so it may be a high water use, but that it could be fed via drip versus, um, lawn, which cannot be really, uh, watered in the same, with the same mechanism.
Yes, Jen has pointed out, Jen has pointed out another layer of this beautiful landscape onion. Um, so in the irrigation standards, which you guys haven't gotten to yet, um, it, so it requires low volume drip subsurface is required in any area that is non-turf grass and areas less than six feet wide. So you put all these things together, and we've gotten to exactly what you're talking about. So turf grass is normally irrigated, to my knowledge, by spray heads. Um, and so that is why this has been included, so we're prohibiting turf, uh, or at least the high water turf, then we're also saying in any areas that aren't in the allowed medium to low use turf, you have to have low volume drip or subsurface, which is more efficient watering mechanism and lower water use than the spray heads that are traditionally used for high water use turf areas. I hope I connect those dots.
So, so I'm still unclear as to how, and then, maybe it's in the irrigation that you're talking about, is these high water plants, how they, does it say anything in the, in the irrigation system about, or section about how that is done?
The high water zones, because they're, because they're not turf, um, cuz we've prohibited, the high water zones would, are required, those areas are required to be on the low volume drip subsurface system.
Okay, that's in there.
Right.
I think, like, what you're trying to say is those, it's more sustainable to irrigate that way than using a spray head, because every, you know, like, here, the root systems are shallow, and then the lawn dry out, requiring more water.
I think you nailed it.
Thank you. I mean, I, that was my first degree.
So back to Carolyn, this, we were saying twenty-five percent could be a high water turf here, but maybe we want that to be a a less, uh, lower medium grass requirement.
There are new requirements on lower, medium water turf areas, right?
Correct, it just states very high and high water use turf grasses. Staff specifically moved away from naming a specific type of seed mix. Cause lord only knows what type of seed mixes come down the way. So I wanted to be more encompassing there, but you can certainly, anywhere here, um, and you're not limited by the fifty percent high water zone either, if you're using a medium to low water turf. Um, and there are several examples in that, in that list. It might not be as durable, but there are options.
They sound low, so maybe then we can mix the twenty-five percent of landscape area to be allowed to be higher water turf. Just can't do away with high water turf, you get yourself some low water turf.
Yeah.
Just don't trample it to death.
I don't, I don't have pets.
You can apply for a pet relief area if you're veterinarian or.
Which is a hundred fifty feet.
Boarding.
I still like.
Dog collie.
I mean, I don't have kids, and my dog doesn't mind going up wood chips, but I know some people, you know, little thing, they just spend a lot of time in the grass, and it looks like they're just all mud, you know, trying to be sympathetic to my community.
Yeah.
This is a tough one.
Do something with kids, will ya? You, yeah. I mean, I have people, let's not talk about horses.
So, I mean, I mean, to look at, I mean, here, here's the, the rules that you have stated here, I mean, if, if we went with, you know, that, that, that here's for, for single family, you have to have six inch depth of mulch, forty, blah, 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 all of those kinds of things going across the bottom row, right?
I think it all comes hounds on each other, like, the way that this is all put together, if you notice all the other different communities, it's very similar, because, you know, you're weighing, okay, water uses versus the plants, having native species, heat in your yard, all these things, and I think all of these things together, they actually need, they actually mean something, you know, it's like, it's like the sum of a whole, as opposed to, if we're just looking at every little part, we can pick this part till we're blue in the face, but there's a reason why I think each municipality has some, a similar, you know, like, this is how deep your, you know, your mulch should be, because this is gonna help this, and, I mean, I do like the idea that we are considering having the whole edible space, because I think that's important, and I think other municipalities probably are adding that, you know, and, um, so, I mean, I appreciate how it looks, you know, or, and because it all works together. I think the more we separate pieces and take things out, it's gonna create this chaos that we're not gonna be able to solve, cuz none of us are experts really, truly in, like, this whole landscape field.
How many of these municipalities apply these standards to single family homes?
I do not know the answer of that off the top of my head, there were some that got incredibly complicated on their applicability, um, to the point, as an avid code reader, my eyes were blazing over.
My guess is Aspen definitely.
Yeah.
I believe Aspen's was like a page long in applicability.
Right, I would say Front Range too, because they are, speaking of water, right? They're, they're on water, they get water, like you were saying. Yeah, you just only get this, this is all you get, and this is what you can put in your front yard if you want, any sort of greenery.
I thought Boulder's surprisingly lax. And that was after reading Aspen's.
It varies. So I can, I can certainly pull up, I have all of that here, um, as far as applicability, it might have been, this is Boulder's.
But I mean.
I just think, um, important information on.
Pete.
Pete, how successful.
You're right, and each one does have your allowance.
Right.
So Boulder has the addition of a dwelling unit on there as being required.
Okay.
Um, an additional.
So like, if you add in the EU.
Redevelopment, they do not exempt single family duplex, it does not appear in there, they call it a scope.
This applies to their single family.
Yes, yes, uh, they have, yeah, they've got re- they've got more redevelopment in their applicability than we do. Um, so let's take a look, I think it was Aspen's that was challenging. Mics are hot.
One of the ones, to me, that seems like it would be, would be the Northwest Council of Governments, because, you know, that, I mean, that, they're, they're over a bunch of us for different code things, and it seems like, are they like a western slope, it, I mean, sounds like northwest. Prox, I mean, is that? Is that what they are?
I can get you the county list if you'll hold on just a second.
I'm assuming that's what your model code is, when it says the model code.
Also, I see, uh, that Westminster opened, and they apply the regulations to single family, existing single family, existing non-single family, unless they have a development plan or official development. Existing, so, so even, even existing single family, this applies to, if you have no development plan.
And following that up, thanks for pulling that up, um, Commissioner Sipperly, this is Aspen's, um, projects that do not have water supplied by the city, so, uh, this is an interesting one, though not surprising, projects in the city of Aspen are three planning zone, which is their high density zone is exempted.
There's no grass there anymore.
Not quite sure on the logic there, and then they actually have a list of special circumstances, um, including but not limited to, so the list can go on, um, in which portions of these standards shall not apply. In these circumstances, applicants shall follow the variance process described, so it's a variance procedure. Uh, public parks, sports field, golf courses, schools, uh, landscapes where tree preservation is required, landscape, landscapes including public right of way, ecological restoration projects, mined land reclamation projects, stormwater treatment facilities that require irrigation, wildfire mitigation areas planned to establish defensible space, properties undergoing Pittkin County scenic review. Here's one for a couple of us on, on the dais, registered local, state, or federal historical sites.
Storm?
Historic.
Oh, like Merle property, probably.
It looks like Northwest COGS, if you, if for single families.
So exactly. Most of the municipalities we're looking at do apply to single family, so maybe I'm just a yes. I totally that thought.
Joe, Joe is like, I am gardening and it's a kill.
Well, you can have your, you can have your garden, we've established.
Yes.
With, within the limits.
It's, it's more just.
Anyone can have their garden, not just.
Very complex to enforce, but, but I said, um, right?
And if you guys move this forward, if you, if you say you've gotten to a space where you're okay with that applicability, we can certainly, and staff will be reviewing this much more leading up to city council discussion, we can certainly bring these concerns to them as well, so that they also, a second tier of discussion.
So, you know, the question I would have too, I mean, you know, we're like a learning organization, right? So as we do it, you know, cuz you read some of these things, and I think the soil moist, moisture sensor, you know, I always hate those things. Thank you, but, but I mean, I mean, as, eh, as you go through, I mean, it, it can be improved as we go through, but we're just making a statement that, that we're going with what's here now, but if some of it's overwieldy, then, then we could pull back on it later or add some more later if we think we're missing something.
Most certainly, we write code here at Glenwood Springs.
And, and we check it six years later, we're honest.
The previous, yeah, the previous organization I worked for, I wrote one piece of code in three and a half years. And I would say during my five years here, that it's, I can't even count, it's astronomical, so we, it is truly a living document, we learn from it all the time. Jen goes down rabbit holes and researches things from six years ago that got dropped off, and we fix things too, so rest assured, if there's an issue, we'll be back.
Did you guys think that it should apply to single family homes?
Staff is recommending approval of planning item oh seven dash twenty-two.
Say yes.
Okay, so.
That's the first one.
So Hannah, what's next?
Um, let's see here.
I don't think I have like twenty-five percent comment in the actual motion, or did I?
Hmm, I think that was brought up.
No.
I mean, yeah, cuz right now.
Motion has not been amended yet.
Okay, but it's been seconded.
Yeah, and we're still in discussion for all of the things, so I think.
So this one, we're good with.
Are we ready? Are we voted?
No, we've got other considerations here. That's only second one.
Um, you know, so I think you guys have covered the applicability to single family and duplex. I think, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we've discussed the turf limitations.
Uh, I feel like we have.
What do you, the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't care about single, you know, ourselves.
And while Hannah's putting that back up, I will just say that the council, the Northwest COG is. And while Hannah's putting that back up, I will just say that the council, the Northwest Cog, is Eagle, Grand, Jackson, Pittkin, Summit counties, includes Steamboat Springs and includes Glenwood Springs, that I know that they were looking at adding route, but I, I think. Um, so Eagle, Grand, Jackson, Pittkin, Summit, plus Steamboat and Glenwood.
Jackson is, Jackson's what?
Walden, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I knew it was.
Pretty good record. Pretty.
Yep, licensed landscape architect, we already talked about. Want to talk about the energy strip?
I'd like to talk. I would like to talk about planning strips. I, I guess, you know, my, my, my fear, and I'm, I'm one of these people that, on, on the weekends, and you know, I don't have as many weekends now because I'm retired, so I have a lot more time. But, but, but mowing grass or having, you know, the low used turf for me was, I mean, it's so much easier than having, um, uh, zero-scape stuff and I have to maintain it or pull weeds. I mean, that, that's kind of how I view it in my head. So I guess one, one fear that, that I have is that, that if we do, um, zero-scape out there, it's gonna turn ugly because people are gonna just let it go to ugly because they're not gonna maintain it. And, you know, and, and just in that one little strip, what, I mean, what is it? You have to have a tree every, there, yeah, thirty feet, but these kind of things. And, and so anyway, that's my only statement with that. It seems like that it, it's a tough change to do. That if we're just gonna do it on, on, on new, on new places, we're gonna have, you know, ninety-nine percent of it's gonna be the grass and the trees, and then we're gonna, in like fifty years, it'll be different maybe.
But it can be low turf, low water turf.
Exactly. It could be like a low, maybe that's what it is.
So we're good on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you can do that or choose trees and pull like weeds.
Or pulling weeds.
Just put in the low, low water. Recultivate your weeds.
I have a few comments about planting strips. One of them, if, if it requires to have irrigation, it's kind of, there's some logistics between getting the irrigation from your property under the sidewalk to the planting strip. So, I mean, I guess we're requiring an irrigation system everywhere, and this is new construction. Theoretically, you might not have a sidewalk yet. But I got some neighbors down the street who were trying to dig underneath the sidewalk and they had to get the three-year-old out because it's hard to run lines underneath the concrete sidewalk. So that's just an installation concern, um.
Well, if it's new construction, you're gonna be doing utilities, so going in the streets, you're gonna be taking out or having easy access for at least.
Except most utilities don't come from the street, they come from the out.
Well, that's another point. But, and it may not be on the other, it could be on the other side of the driveway, and it could get problems as well, too.
Um, so that's just a, a cost and logistics, uh, thing. But part, another thing we use planting strips for, and I'm a dog owner, is that's where they go to the bathroom along the sidewalk on either side. And when, if you have off-street parking, you're pulling out of your driveway, if there was a lot of, say, shrubbery there, your line of sight would be impeded and you might, you know, cause car accidents if, if there was lots of tall shrubbery in the planting strip.
Are there alternatives to zero-scape and, and grass in a planting strip?
So this, this is what we have currently.
But I mean, no, I mean, outside of the code.
Okay.
What, what else could be done there?
Uh.
Are there alternatives, uh, not just code-wise, but.
Three-inch rocks.
Dachshunds.
Um.
What?
I've seen people just put rocks out there.
I was gonna say, like, organic material of other kinds, such as gravel or mulch, things of that nature. We, I mean, we do have some planting strips. We're not, you're not required to put turf in there now. We have a lot of planting strips that have turf. They have to include two of the following, which turf is mentioned here, which is why I wanted to bring it up, because they're small spaces. So do we want to discourage with language or state that it's only a low-water turf to be used here? Because I don't think it's quite specific enough. Um, with all the commas, you could, yeah, make an argument. Um, so, and you can have up to forty percent of the planting strip may be hard-surfaced, concrete, brick, composite papers, stone, or rock-type mulch. That answers your question of alternatives.
Thank you.
But forty percent.
It is in the code.
Where's the, where's the irrigation requirement? Or is that in something that's being?
I don't actually think that we have. Let me go to that section so that I am speaking from knowledge. I don't think our code requires um, permanent irrigation for all aspects. There's certainly some that we require, uh, temporary irrigation until the, um, until the plants take hold. But in our code specifically, landscape, landscape plan, alternative compliance, installation and maintenance. So we don't have something.
For the planting strips.
Right, requiring an irrigation system for all areas.
Do you require an irrigation system for landscaped areas though, in general? Or can I still go out there with the hopes? I mean, if I were to build a new house?
Yeah, it does not state that is required. That is something that I noticed in a lot of the other codes. They specifically have language that say, permanent, you might have seen that. Permanent landscaping shall be installed unless it's an area that can support on, so, so drought resilient, that could be supported on its own after temporary establishment watering. Um, so we don't have that in our code.
Or also, wasn't there something about that excluded handwater? Didn't I see something about?
In our code, in a different code?
Well, in somebody else's code, I think it was, or some of the reading I did. There's some, some language about.
Interesting. I don't recall seeing that, but it's very possible that it's there.
Well, but I mean, if, if we have this moisture sensor and all that.
I'm the moisture sensor.
Yeah.
I was trying, don't want.
Call Carolyn and she'll.
That is what I do, yeah.
Well, you're.
I don't have an irrigation system, yeah.
So we do have the soil moisture sensing device for irrigation systems, but we don't actually state an irrigation system is required.
So are, are you guys proposing what you showed us up there is that, is that what's in that?
So the yellow highlighted area is the new additions for the irrigation system?
Right, and I was thinking about the plant, like the plant.
The planting strip, we did not change it. That's why I brought it up for discussion. And, you know, if you guys don't feel comfortable, this is something that staff could take more time to evaluate and come up with a recommendation to city council. I, I mean, I will be very honest. The staff needs more time with this particular code.
I don't know where we're at with, we actually have their lights on or?
That's correct.
So I just have a question as we're looking at that language. Can you give me some clarification on, under the planting strip, what would an application of, under the definition of a planting strip would be like hard-surfaced concrete?
What would an application?
Yeah, like, if, I guess I'm not understanding why you have concrete in your planting strip.
Yeah.
I don't understand what that means.
Lots of pathways across to get to your cars.
Could be decorative, decorative stone pavers. I, I, we don't see many that employ this, but we do have some, we think, we do have some planting strips that, that are not all covered organic material. So it's an allowance. I wouldn't say that it's used very often. So pa, paper stones.
They're like white.
Decorative, decorative gravel applications.
Would you have to count your driveway as part of your planting strip?
No.
How about sidewalks that go from your house, go across the landing strip to the road?
No, the planting strip is very specific in our code of where it is. Minimum five feet in width from back edge of curb. So it literally is between road and sidewalk. That's the planting strip.
Right, but you know, you've got your, your pedestrian sidewalk parallel to the street, and then there's those little sidewalks that go to connect, so you walk out your door, cross the landing strip and get in the car.
That's in the forty.
Perpendicular. So yeah, those sidewalks would count towards your forty percent that could be concrete?
Possibly, yes.
Okay, so sidewalks aren't exempt.
Good examples.
The beelots, sidewalks.
I kind of like what you put in here. I mean, you just did the drought tolerant.
Yeah.
On the low-water plants and.
Low water turf.
Yeah, 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 I'm, I'm kind of okay with.
We, so would you mean low-water turf?
Low, yeah, low water.
Low-water plants, perennials, annuals, or, or tarpea.
Yeah.
All of those are low water.
That's right, that's right. I agree. That's great.
Okay.
But then, back to your comment about not requiring irrigation, was that irrigation systems, was that for all developments or just for the planting strips?
That's for all. We don't have language that requires permanent irrigation systems.
But they have to have a water sensor.
If they have an irrigation.
You have an irrigation.
If they do, if.
It just says it's required for an irrigation system, but it doesn't say the irrigation system is required.
What's wrong with that now?
Yeah, I'm not gonna say that.
If you want to do a whole yard of gravel, you don't need to irrigate anything.
Right, I'm gonna say what we see in ComDev as far as developments, larger, because we don't look at single-family and duplex currently. Um, to main, I think perhaps there might be some language in maintenance, so you can't just let all of your landscaped area die, which then requires some type of watering. And I think most developments find it more efficient, um, to not go out and handwater their forty-unit complex with the apartment manager, would be my guess.
That's how it's now.
So I would say most of the time, but not single-family homes, right? Single-family homes are not coming in with irrigation systems necessarily. Though, my goodness, if you don't have one, how do you survive?
So you're enjoying that? Um, but I, I'm okay with leaving it like that. If you don't have an irrigation system, then.
I'm with you. I think most people for ease and ease of maintenance probably will install one. And if there is one, it should be regulated and have sensors, but I like that you don't have to have one.
Great. Uh, my final question on this, um, so we've got A, which has the drought tolerant or low water in there. B, which is listed for the downtown core. It does not mention low water.
I think it should be low water.
So I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that staff would add that, and I'm getting some head nods, so that's, okay. So carry that through.
Yeah, please.
Okay. Uh, I think you have covered my discussion topic, so is, then it's up to you as far as moving forward or making additional changes. There is a motion on the floor and a second.
It was to approve. Yes. And after we hashed it all out, I mean, yeah, pretty well voted right from the first place. And I think you guys can relay our concerns and our edits. I, I did have that we would like to learn more about best practices for fire waste design. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so I, I guess one, one question I have is, so, you know, these are the, and, and I'm gonna get talking about single-family. We'll talk about, about a multifamily thing, but, but so who, who, um, inspects the, the four inches of mulch, you know, all the, that kind of detail?
No, I remember. That's not our problem. That's not our question.
Well, but I'm just asking that, if you put that in, I mean, I'm just talking about.
Good question.
A real person that.
And you might have seen some of the other municipalities have inspection language listed. Some was pretty extensive.
Yeah.
Aspen. Some was a little bit light. Um, I would say how we operate now with landscape plans, we look for the plan to comply when it comes in, and then staff does go out, um, before final CO to make sure that everything looks as the plan indicated.
Exactly.
So I think this would follow that same, it might not be perfect, but it would, we might need to alter this down the road when we start implementing this in mind.
I mean, I mean, the reality of the, yeah, and I mean, I've done it before, and they come out, Gretchen County, every plant, JF's, and all of these plants.
Uh-huh.
And, and, you know, we're spot on. But, 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 but then you have your depth, so, so basically don't worry about it, whatever.
I think we would look.
It's more like a guideline.
I, I think we would look to see that it's represented on your landscape plan. Most of it's gonna be visible. There are some components that are done before you actually do the plantings and without a inspection.
I mean, I'm just throwing this out from, because I used to live this life, but was, was that, you know, we would have like the civil engineer would be responsible for saying, this was done for plant, blah, blah, blah. So would you have the, the landscape architect say, maybe they checked a couple tree, you know, blah, blah, blah.
Certainly when a landscape architect signs a plan, that's the same sort of concept. This would only apply.
Yeah, not for any single-family, but for like a multi, you know, for like, like a larger development, whatever size that I don't know what that is.
And, and I suppose from a staff perspective on enforcement, you know, we're, we're thoroughly involved in the building, um, you know, the actual development when it's being built process. And if we found that this didn't have enough teeth down the road, perhaps we could add something that, you know, at a certain point, like, so fire, our fire department, when a building is being built, has to inspect their fire sprinkler system. That happens. It takes them time, but they do it. It's important. Um, so if this was, if it got to that level, I suppose we could add something in. More, um, out-of-office adventures for planning staff to uh, be dabbling in landscape architecture.
The code enforcement person.
We need sunshine too. That's okay.
I had one more quick thing to bring up that we touched on briefly, and that was like fugitive water, like if your irrigation system's watering the sidewalk.
I like that term, fugitive water.
Yeah.
Get back.
Like fugitive.
Fugitive commissioner.
Yeah, I mean, if your, if the irrigation system's causing massive puddling or spraying the sidewalk, did we cover that anywhere in here?
Yeah, we did not include it. There was the one, it was in, it was only a, a component in the model code.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
I, should we throw that in there? Like, you know, if you're dumping gallons and gallons of water and it's running down a storm drain, you know, we should have that make it against the rules.
I thought that was in there already. I thought you had.
It's in model code. I did not include it in Glenwood Springs. Um, I think this could tie in with, you know, Glenwood Springs has been under watering restrictions, and we're looking at, I want to make sure I don't, um, say the wrong thing here. We're looking at how that gets enforced, I guess. And so this could be a component of that.
Another time on city council's dance card in the coming days is to talk about code enforcement that is kind of community development code enforcement, but then also water enforcement. Um, so we haven't yet had that conversation with city council. We do have a position that is budgeted for twenty twenty-two.
So should we not talk about the fugitive water with this?
Carolyn, I think it's a great point. Um, and I think what was provided in the model code was pretty straightforward. It allows for an enforcement mechanism if we ever do get that.
Yeah.
Um, and so it was stating, it, it basically prohibits fugitive water. They called it water waste. Um, which included excessive puddling runoff due to continuous watering, failure to repair a leak, um, application of water to impervious surfaces. So.
Yeah.
It allow, it would allow staff, it would allow the city to be able to have conversations, and if the conversations didn't go well, possibly enforcement.
Yeah.
Um, to, to chat with people that are watering their sidewalk and have them adjust.
It happens a lot in my neighborhood, and so, I mean.
It drives me crazy.
Frustrating, ju, one, that you're trying to walk down the sidewalk and you're getting sprayed, but just the amount of the gallons just flowing down the, down the gutter.
I have a funny story.
You put that in there?
Commissioner Sipperly, that I need to share with you after the meeting.
Okay, after.
Um.
Before adding it.
I'm hearing.
Adding the fugitive water stipulation?
Yeah. Well, I think it's a great idea. I mean, to mention, you know, water waste, absolutely.
So, so, so what do we add? What do we add?
The version from the model Northwest code that says, avoid puddling, repair your sprinkler heads, don't water impervious surfaces.
Don't water driveway.
Yeah.
Noted.
Are we, we're all good with that?
We are in a.
Yeah, I'm good, sure.
Yeah.
But I would rather call it fugitive water.
Yeah, can we call it fugitive water? I mean, there's fugitive dust mitigation I've had to deal with in a construction management plan, so.
Innocent and self-proven guilty fugitive water.
It's like, move, it's matter out of place. It doesn't belong there. Don't, yeah, move.
Move.
Carolyn's kind of going.
Stay tuned for more after.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we?
Is that it? Are we good?
The whole motion is.
Call the question if we're ready.
I think we're about to hear.
Yeah.
I, I, sorry to make this more complicated. I, I do think we need a, a motion to amend the mo, the motion on the floor uh, to encompass the direction that has been given to staff.
Thank you, Richard. That's what I was just thinking.
Thank you. Okay, I will pull my initial motion and amend the motion to encompass the decisions that have been made on the floor regarding uh, item oh seven two-two and including the findings on page five.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Sipperly and a second from Commissioner Connerton on planning file oh seven dash two-two code amendments. Call the question. Call the question.
Yay.
Thank you so much for taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome job, Hannah.
This was a heavy lift, but we all got there, so you guys deserve some congratulations. And we. We will certainly keep you guys updated on what happens at city council and gets approved down the line.
Yeah, it's great.
Thank you. Yeah.
No.
No.
Commissioner comments? Commissioner Whissing.
Good job.
Senator Connerton.
Well done. Thank you so much.
Well, gonna say, yeah.
Yeah, you guys, great job.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Hey, that was a really comprehensive discussion, and thanks so much for putting that together. And, oh, with the, um, Parks and Rec building, I think it's gonna be a huge improvement on what they've already got there too. So I'm glad we took the action we did.
Commissioner White, Commissioner Wall. I have nothing further to add. Well done. That's awesome. Well done, team. Uh, director's comments.
I just would, um, remind folks that we have, um, the comprehensive plan, uh, community workshops is, uh, the next set of those will be on, uh, April twentieth. And there are, there is at least one, um, steering committee meeting that is before that. And, um, I think that's all I have. And I don't, uh, you know, Mark would always ask what's coming next, and I don't know. I will have to ask Hannah.
For April, we do have applications, so we will have a meeting, but it's looking like only possibly three applications. And that might change to two, um, but some, some variances, your favorite.
The email you sent said third Wednesday of that three month, but.
Yeah, so thank you for bringing that up, Carolyn. I sent out, uh, an Outlook calendar invite. Because, just so you guys have all the information that you can access at any time, uh, staff aims to get you your packet and agenda on the Wednesday before planning commission, which is the third Wednesday. So that's, it was a reminder on the third Wednesday, hey,
you have your packet.
Here's your link. You can check in case, in case Hannah wrote you a beautiful email with a link and had all your names in it and was so organized and then did not hit the send button. And so she found that email waiting for her on Monday when she realized it hadn't gone out. So this was my way of making sure you guys get a reminder, hey, it's packet time. I said it for the Wednesday, cause that is our primary goal after you asked for more time with your packet. It is possible, given crazy circumstances, which never happened here in Glenwood, that the packet doesn't come out until Friday at five PM. That is our absolute deadline. That is like, now, since you guys asked for more time, that is staff's like, oh my God, we're running around like chickens with our heads cut off and we just can't get you the packet until Friday at five. But I think what we've been hitting, that's only happened like once or twice since the request. What we've been hitting is Wednesday at five to Thursday at five PM. So that is just a reminder to you guys, if you don't hear from me, you can still go and check. And that is what, uh, Commissioner Sipperly did over the weekend. She noticed that she had not received an email, but she went and found the materials on the public-facing front, because it had been published. I actually published it. I just didn't let you guys know that I published it.
I found it on the city one.
So there you go.
You guys.
You guys are great. I'm just providing you with another mechanism and making sure that you've got it.
So the next meeting is the nineteenth or the twenty-sixth?
The next meeting is the fourth, uh, so it's April twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
The reminder I sent for you to look at your packet is Wednesday, the twentieth. It's a backup, it's the backup plan.
So did, did city council have anything to say about the comp plan? I know I was, I missed the last comp plan. There's, there's a lot of excitement.
I think the take-home was that the, some members of the steering committee really wanted to have more input. And I think that the second steering committee meeting had been pretty like intensive of like, here's information for you to, to digest. Um, and it was less interactive. And so the, I think there was a concern that it wasn't as interactive. So, um, there was a lot of conversation related to that. I think what, um, city council, uh, ultimately wanted to have happen was more opportunities for public input of all kinds related to the comprehensive plan. And I, I mean, that's just the brief sum up, but there was a lengthy conversation.
So it's all.
And I think that the, the, the next steering committee meeting that was subsequent to the city council meeting, um, and, and maybe, um, Chair Schaefer can give us, you know, his take on it, but with the, I, and, and Commissioner Sipperly and Commissioner, Commissioner Whissing, um, you know, I felt like it was more interactive, um, and certainly, you, you were actually interacting, so you may have a better.
Tell them that we thought we weren't being listened to.
Yeah, many, many people sent.
There was a lot.
Actually, if you, and I think if you sent us an email, we sent all of those emails to the constituents.
Yeah, it was definitely more, more input from the, the committee on that, uh, that meeting.
Yeah. Which I feel like is great, but I also feel like we have a hard time moving through the topics because there's so much feedback. Yeah.
Well.
You know, which is good. We need that.
The way they set it up, that we, you know, with separate satellite tables and.
Was that good?
Those people, you know, getting together, discussing things and then, um, bringing it forth, you know, I thought that was a really good system too. To get away from what you're talking about, Troy.
I wasn't at the second meeting, so I missed that.
I missed it so much.
Anyway, that's awesome. I feel like the last one was much more effective than the first one.
Well, I, I thought that the first one was necessary to just kind of get things going and, and present material.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, it seemed like some people were offended by the fact that they were comparing us to, or, or showing examples of other communities, but we, that's just exactly what Hannah does, and I think it's a very valuable tool to do that. There's not saying we're carbon deli or we're Lakewood or anything else. It's, it's just.
I agree. It was a misunderstanding. Yeah, it was a misunderstanding.
Yeah.
And they just didn't, I don't think that lead-up provided that context saying, oh, this is, we're just, we needed a, a place to start. And then all of a sudden everybody's like, wait, we're not.
We're not carbon deli.
If, if I could.
Not what they were saying ever. They were saying, this is an example of this type of system. This is an example of a different type of system.
And I would say that, that, that was ad services that we put into the comp plan that they wouldn't have normally done. That was in reaction to the idea that we might have a moratorium. And so it was an investigation that was specific. Can you go out and find what other communities do in terms of managing growth? So it was, I mean, I would say that it, it would not have been in their normal procedure in a comprehensive plan to provide that at this stage. It was something that was asked for. And I do think that, um, it was, you know, that was maybe not understood by everybody.
Yeah, the last one was it.
Okay.
Okay.
We are in chair.
Thank you. I like the use of the capital.
I do.